We're going to call it or the regular board meeting for the category of education, December 10th, 2020, 7:30 p.m. If you would, please join me in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. I do want to say real quickly before we get started tonight, Karen Evans, our board secretary, is not with us tonight. She is at home recovering from a procedure she's had this week, and she wanted me to relay her gratitude for all the calls, texts, well wishes she's received, the prayers she's received. She asked to please keep her in her in her thoughts and prayers, and she is doing well, so we're glad to hear that. Okay, Mr. Turner, let's bring this to item three. Sorry, not Mr. Turner, still four number representative reporting, this Tony Clevina.
Good evening. We have some great progress to report. Over the past month since we last had an update, we've had another full meeting of our council, December meeting. In this meeting, we broke into breakout rooms, and I had them all come up with specific ideas for service project. Service being one of the things that I really wanted the board, the council, to focus on this year. And after we'd all broken up into breakout rooms, we voted on one specific idea that we wanted to put into implementation in January and February. This idea that we voted on and came out on top was making gift baskets and cards for the elderly given during this time. Many are very lonely in retirement homes and communities, even they can't have many visitors. And since then, we have contacted Colonial High, which is a local retirement community, and we have represented coming to speak to the entire council in our January meeting to help us focus in on specific action plans and help us plan for implementation in February after the January meeting. Furthermore, we are having another meeting next week for Mission Turner's project to help with student voice on upcoming district planning. So we are looking forward to continuing that project and helping voice to voice. And we are looking forward to action planning and implementing our service project in January and February. Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you for the update. It's always good to see kids out serving their community. The item four, good news items, Mr. Turner. ...under retirement, so we will serve that issue. If you would go on forward, please.
Thank you, Board and Superintendent. I just wanted to say just a few words. It's been 40 years, actually. Paul Hogan, Superintendent, or Superintendent, when I was interviewed back in the late 70s, and served with Larry Ryle, actually was the one that asked me to stay on. So there's been four or five superintendents, and when I start representing the school system, let's see, Kentucky 18 was two lanes, US 42 was two lanes, and no businesses were allowed to be open on Sunday. So it's been a while. And I just wanted to say what an honor it's been to serve Boone County. They've always been my favorite client. Because, you know, as an attorney, you get a lot of controversy, and by heart, we get clients all the time. But with the school system, what's been unique about representing it is that from the very beginning, very first board I served, and very first superintendent I served, all the way through Randy Poe and Mr. Turner, to a person, they've always been kids first, and they've been positive. It's not trying to mitigate the negative all the time. It's helping board accomplish the positive. And that's been very rewarding for me. And I remember our first board I served, some of you might remember Diane Holland, Arlie Jones, Mr. Bitterich, Mr. Anderson, Jerry Burr, all those folks. How many school boards can say they had a school board member that danced on Midwestern hayride? That's pretty nice. But I had a couple of highlights in my career, but I will say this. Representing this few folks in the 70s definitely at the top of the list. I, and you just, you just put, have put in perspective how far the school system has come since I've been here. Two high schools, now we got five. Sixth grade schools, now we got, I don't even remember, 14. 14. And I, I had the, I had the honor of representing the school system throughout the period of Kentucky education reform in 1992. Very controversial. And at that time, unfortunately, Kentucky's school system was in the position of, thank God for Arkansas, and we're dead last, we're only second last. And with education reform in 1992, very hard for the board to swallow it, frankly. Very controversial. Because after all, the board member, they're elected by the people that tax you, and yet they're not allowed to have any say so. What goes on inside that building as far as curriculum, what's taught? And it counts taught. Very controversial. And so the board passed a resolution that school-based councils could do what the statutes say they can do, but we have the right of course for approval. And so that lawsuit became the Boucher case, which I lost in the Kentucky Supreme Court. And I want to say it's the best case I ever lost. It's along the list. That's the best. So I just want to say I have taken too much time. I'll give you one more. I see on the agenda tonight, and I did review the agenda and all the packets very carefully, and I see that redistricting on the, redistricting on the agenda tonight. And I remember when, I can't even forget the school it was built, but we were, we were over in Collins, which is again, Collins Elementary. Back then, the board liked to rotate the meetings among schools, mostly because the board office conference room became way too small to house the board meetings we had in the beginning. And so we were sitting in those elementary school chairs, this far off the ground, while the redistricting went on. And they didn't do, frankly, they didn't do the due diligence that you do with the committee and all the demographics and all that. They did research, but nothing compared to how thorough you do it today. So there was a maddening crowd there. We were in those tiny little chairs till 2:15 a.m. And that's not going to happen tonight. So it's been my pleasure. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for participating, and we all hope that you enjoy your time. Our good news item number three is recognition of one of our own. Recognition of Jennifer Hickey, Assistant Principal at Jones Middle School. The Jones Middle School mantra is once a jet, always a jet. And there's no one who lives that motto more than Dr. Jen Hickey. Dr. Hickey was a jet as a middle school student, went on to graduate from Boone County High School, worked for Boone County Schools as part of our social staff while a college student, became a teacher at Jones Middle School, and now is the Assistant Principal at Jones Middle School. And without a doubt, she is the heart of Jones. We would like to recognize Dr. Jen Hickey tonight for completing her doctoral studies, for her compassion and the proof that all children can learn. Dr. Hickey, congratulations. We're very proud of you, and we love the way that you walk and talk and talk. So please come forward, and we want to give something to you to show our recognition for all of your hard work. If you would pay attention to the screen behind me, and we have a fourth video that we're going to play. As long as we're worried about. There you go.
...over the years who have, and why, who were, and he has told us that there are people who have, this has been over the years, who have donated kind of a lot of money to the charity. As you all know, we're saving once a jet, always a jet. And if you don't want, they send a lot of money to the diary. And so today, we've got very special occasions and recognition for our belonging to these. And unfortunately, the end of it. The achievement of a day, which is the highest woman in our profession. Was that short, but that's a very, very, very amazing. And so today, we're down there, in order to lift up this doctor, and in the circle of all of our achievements, similarly, of what it means to her, of all of our, our community, of the whole school. I had two leaders, another man, they never looked for her, and they made sure, and then they sit down and talk. And that's why I'm not able to be careful. I work with, and it's not, I don't know, I don't need to be comfortable. That was in the field. One is that I'm a better.
Congratulations. Glad you're reading through. Okay, that wraps up our good news items. If you are here only for the good news items and you want to scoot out, you're more than welcome. You don't have to leave, but I think we do have a couple of folks in the waiting area, so they'd love to slide over, but don't feel like you have to leave, but I just want to give you that opportunity now as we begin to transition. Okay, so next on our agenda is our audience of citizens. Looks like we have a few folks that have signed up to speak tonight. Just as we lead into this time, I'll remind you, this is a time for the board to hear from our community. It's not a time to debate items. It's not a time for us to kind of have a back and forth, that we will listen, we will take notes. If there's anything that you want us to follow up with as a board or for the district office, let us know that. I think we've got just about everybody's address here already, maybe not, maybe not a couple of them. So if you, if you have a follow-up item with any dragons, you're emailing us. It's kind of a short answer there. We do limit the comments to two minutes. We do have a long meeting tonight, so we're going to try to stick to that, please. So with that said, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to cheat you here. Okay, so I will, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just read them off in order, and I'll try to remind you as we go along. And it's going to be Mindy Faye, Amy, okay. Oh, sorry, McInerney, Rick Klein, Stephanie Crane, David Shabilla, Shabilia? Shabilia? Vanessa Prubel, or Prubel? Prubel, sorry. Adebel, so. Ms. Faye.
A big timer, so I will be quick. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Melinda Faye. I am a mother of four Boone County students. I have one at Connor High School, one at Connor Middle School, and two at the Rawa Elementary. I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen, not just as a mother with children in the district, but I'm also a healthcare provider. I've been working in the Healthcare Bureau for the last 16 years. I'm most recently and thankfully in a position where I'm working inside of schools, and I am seeing firsthand the effects that disclosures of the schools are having on children. I see 15 to 20 kids a day from preschool through high school ages, and I get to have personal conversations with them, and they share with me the anguish that they are experiencing. I will be honest that I was extremely disheartened the other day when I received the emails, patient as I have been as a parent and as a healthcare provider, to not see some more action. I feel like somebody in this state of Kentucky needs to stand up for these children. And I sit in this room, and I have all these things I wanted to say, and I'm not going to have enough time, but I'm reading these posters on the wall, and they say things like, "The gateway to success," and "We're raising leaders," and we're not doing that right now. Educational needs are not being met virtually. Every other business that I can think of under the sun is open right now and doing so in a safe way, and there is no reason why our schools can't do that. We can hop the river and go to Ohio. We can hop the river and go to Indiana, and kids are going to school five days a week right now, this week. Why is Kentucky? You know, I heard our lawyer speak on how we used to be second up from Arkansas. We're going to go that way again, guys. My kids are going to have to compete with kids that are able to go to school, and I'm just begging you, as leaders and for this community, I'm begging you to stand up. I'm begging you to stand up for the kids of this state, and I want to know what I can do to help, because the governor needs to hear from the superintendents and from all, everybody on this board, loud and clear. Thank you. I mean that respectfully.
Good evening. My name is Amy McInerney. I am an HR manager for a local nonprofit and a parent to two elementary school kids. I have been doing my research throughout this pandemic, and I really feel very strongly that our kids need to go back to school. And I know that you guys are behind these needs, and you are working really hard. And I have talked to our principal, Mr. Fuller, today. Our mind is phenomenal, and the teachers that we have are phenomenal. And I 100% know you're busting their guts, because I get doctor messages when I get up and when I go to bed, and you think are working their guts off. But the thing is, my kids are in elementary school, and they are not learning virtually. My son's a first grader. He cannot write, let alone type. And I remember taking and typing in my extended and in pray that these kids don't have the skills to successfully learn through virtual learning. I recently saw a map of our country. Of our country are eight states that are not allowing kids in-person learning right now. Kentucky is one of those eight states. If we keep this up, our kids will not be successful. We are competing for scholarships in the future against Ohio and Indiana and Tennessee. And online kids cannot be, our kids, our Boone County, Kentucky kids, cannot be successful without in-person instruction from the teachers. And Mr. Turner, what I'm asking from you and what I'm asking from the board is courage. I am asking you to stand up to Governor this year. I am asking you to take a stand for our students and to make a difference. Because courage is courageous, and one superintendent will be 10, and it'll be 20, and it will grow. And we can make a difference, and we can get our kids back to school. And from a parent perspective, I want to know what we can do. Like this, Kentucky has finally evolved in this school system, and I want to keep being more involved. So please, let us know what we can do from a volunteer perspective, what you guys need help with. Right? I'm on the time, but thank you very much.
First of all, I mean, I got Ted, Bill, Paul, be on this side, and now I got it on this side. But we let it make. I'm here because I can see the look on my son's face when I told him he wasn't going to school back in January. I'm here to ask you, what do the, what do 37 states know? What does the CDC know? And again, 37 states that have kids in school. What does the CDC know that's the safest place for kids to be in school? And the other, what does Kroger, Walmart, all these, all these stores know that have thousands of employees making thousands of contacts every day, very close to people? What do they know that the state of Kentucky and schools evidently don't know? And finally, my only other question, and we'll say you do have an answer. If, is Boone County, can seek relief through the state attorney, who's already suing to the Supreme Court, can they seek relief from the government's order? And that's it. That's it.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Crane. I really didn't know we were allowed to talk tonight. I'm not prepared. I'm here for redistricting for the new school, Steeplechase. I do wish, but hope that if you all vote on that tonight, that you really consider all other alternatives, because I don't believe the two scenarios you all gave us were right and correct. I don't think, I think you could do better. As a Boone County school system, you can do better for all your students if you redistrict better than what you, the two scenarios you gave us. I know schools need some relief for overcrowdedness, but to make Steeplechase a title-one and almost at capacity right off the bat is not right, when you have all those other schools that are under capacity that you need to redistrict the whole system, maybe. You need to look at that. So I do appreciate your time, I appreciate the work you've done on this, but I do believe you need some different scenarios than what you have. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to represent Steeplechase Community. I'm HOA president, present. Been here for the public hearings, heard all the stories. It's really felt that the committee that's giving you the information probably doesn't have all the, you know, information in terms of trying to create a good balance to how those maps look. There was a lot of imbalance there. You really need to look at it again. I don't know, again, if there's gonna be a vote tonight. I'm asking that the vote probably get held off till January. Certainly, if the new members come in, there's two of them. But the idea is, you know, this is supposed to be for the good health and balance for the children, and, you know, carting kids all across, you know, the different county areas and lines. It's really, really not there. You've got schools that are giving their all in terms of, you know, giving up kids to other, you know, the Steeplechase school is being opened, and then you have others that really aren't contributing at all. It really needs to be a better review of the balance, because there's a lot of imbalance here. Thank you.
My name is Vanessa Grubel, and I'm speaking on behalf of a member of the Steeplechase community. Art Luther King Jr. once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Members of the board, now is that time to do what is right for all children of Boone County. The members of this community who are impacted by the Steeplechase elementary school redistricting have voiced their concerns about the proposals via telephone calls, emails, letters, and speaking at the open public forums. We have implored the committee to do what is right for all students in Boone County. These pleas, based on the recommendations before you, have gone ignored. I ask you, the board, to do what is right. I ask the board to vote on the redistricting to be tabled until January, when the new board is seated. The people in the community voted for the new board members based on their positions, so please allow these voices to be heard. I ask for a representative of Steeplechase community to be on the committee. The homeowners of both Sutherland and Steeplechase, who are greatly impacted, had intentionally been left out of this process. I ask the board to not open a new school at capacity. Lastly, I would love to see the new breakdown on the proposed scenarios, as the information that was posted today does not give us the opportunity to comment on the new plans as it relates to capacity or the socioeconomic factors, but appears to only have placated a few. I implore you to do what is right. And as Mia Love once said, "Difficult things aren't easy, but they're worth it."
Everything is pretty well said, but I agree to also, or I'd like to move to delay the voting on item 9A, the redistricting of Steeplechase Elementary, until the new members are present, so they can have their input, so we can perform further investigation on this with full public visibility, strictly following the Open Records Act and providing clear rationality of decision-making and the supporting evidence for that. If this is the final decision, we ask that you put the best people forward on this school. Mary Grubel would be a good option for her, and just do the best thing for these kids.
Thank you for those comments. I do want to say, as everyone sees on the agenda, we do have redistricting on the agenda later. We will address every topic that was brought up at the forums. We will address what was brought up tonight in our discussion. I certainly welcome Channel 12 to stay, because it's gonna be an important part of the equation here. The public forums are designed for us to hear from the community, for us to go back and work on our plans based on what we hear from the community. Some arguments are very valid, some aren't. So we will talk through that all tonight in a very open and transparent way.
I wanted to comment, a couple of parents said, "What can we get kids back in school?" Dr. Glass is the Kentucky Education Commissioner. He is currently working with multiple ICA groups throughout Kentucky. My concern is that on Monday or Tuesday, they will publish the new requirements for districts that are still unread to have any in-person activities. I don't know what those will look like. No one knows what that will look like. I don't know if the executive order will be extended or not. I have no idea. But Dr. Glass, we genuinely know it's gonna be a long uphill road. So if anyone wants someone beyond, where they're looking at the state of Kentucky, Dr. Glass is kind of spearheading that group, as he will advise the governor what his opinion is regarding forward-facing instruction. I don't know what that looks like. They said perhaps Monday or Tuesday. And I couldn't even hazard a guess what it will look like at this point. But if you're looking for someone beyond just us, who are, trust me, I have four kids, trust me. But that would be an avenue for people to let their opinions be known, especially since your experience is, so I encourage you, please don't stop with us, and that is one of those avenues. So if you look at the Kentucky Education, just Google Dr. Glass, and you'll find his email, so.
I just have an article on him. Thank you.
Based upon some of the parents saying what they can do. I know that some of you may work and have a professional life. Those that don't, if you have any ability to be able to maybe be a substitute teacher, I encourage you to do that, to consider that, to reach out to the district, to reach out to our HR department, and see if you can make a difference in that end. I can promise you that when we do have the opportunity to go back to school, and I can honestly say of how hard these people have worked up here, especially our board chair and our vice chair, since the governor made his comments on August 10th, the interim commissioner at that time on August 11th made his comments. At least those two people, I promise you, those two people have worked minimally, at least one, if not two days a week, out of their own professional careers, as well as their family, of working with the state, working with the CDC. And I know, even though our board chair and myself will be stepping down, we have three other strong members right here that have done the same. We have members coming in that know a little bit about it, especially Dr. Tiffany Schlusler. She's been on the front end of it, at least from the medical practice, what she does as a dentist. But I can tell you, parents, I can tell everybody out there that this board, the superintendent in this district, has worked tirelessly to try to get these students back in school. And it is a balancing act. It's just not one. You know, all of us have either had children in the district that have gone to school, whether they've graduated or they're there right now. And it's affected us, too. So it's just not that we've sat here and made last-minute decisions of the eleventh hour. It's gone through, and we hear it all the time, that, you know, we're not for the kids getting back in school, and that's the opposite of what we've done. And I just want to reassure you again, that's on our mind every day, every hour, and about every minute of trying to get these kids back in school safely.
Can you submit it to us, please? If we, we're in the middle of our meeting now, we're at our audience citizens, so I don't want to be rude, and if it opens, if I do it once, we're gonna have to do it.
That's been on everybody's minds. Why, before the governor did this second shutdown, we'll be in school four days a week, sooner?
Yeah, that's a, that's a question.
Other counties, like Kentucky, have been in school up until this second shutdown the governor did, or this shutdown. Why, why was it going down?
Kent County had a K through three, at least, four days a week. Their neighbor and many other counties in Kentucky.
Yeah.
I'm not feeling.
Not every county is the same. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us to item six, the audit report from Art Stanning. Okay, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Dana Demonte. I'm an insurance manager with Art Stanning, the auditor to the district. I'm here to just communicate some required communications of that audit, as well as some financial information, so. Some required communications here. We're obviously pleased to be the auditors for the school district, and this information is intended solely for the Board of Education and the district management. Our engagement letter communicated the scope of the audit. That included an audit of the June 30th, 2020 financial statements, as well as a single audit in compliance with the informed grant guidance. This required communications just breaks down some auditor and management responsibilities. Obviously, the financial statements are the responsibility of the district. As an auditor, we perform risk-based auditing, so basically, we can't examine every transaction, every invoice, every payroll. That would be inefficient for our time and the district's time. So we look at what's risky within a financial statement for a support district, and we do our tests, and that's how we obtain reasonable assurance and not absolute assurance on the financial statements. Also, we do take into consideration internal controls. This is not an internal control audit, but that is taken into consideration, and we don't provide any assurance over the internal controls of the district. The other, the financial statements do not relieve the management of your responsibilities, and there's further information about the responsibilities in the engagement letter I mentioned earlier. So in the executive summary here, we plan to issue an unmodified or clean opinion on both the financial statements and the federal, major federal program. So that's the good news. We received excellent cooperation from Linda and her staff. Obviously, with the ongoing pandemic, the audit looked a little bit differently than it had in the past, so Linda and her team were very flexible with us in getting a same-time leave, as we were working remotely instead of onsite. There were no disagreements or difficulties during the audit, and there were no consultations with other independent accountants. If there were, we would communicate that to you. There were significant policies, accounting policies, in no one of the financial statements, and that was one that was adopted in the current year, GAAS 84. Internal accounting estimates, depreciable lives, capital assets. There are no internal control matters that are reportable. We are not aware of any matters related to fraud or legal acts that require communication, so that's a good thing. And then, other written communication will be available on the Management of Representation under. And then, there were no significant audit adjustments or uncorrected adjustments due to materiality levels. Now, we're gonna look at some trends of the past couple of years of the district. So this is the district-wide statement of net position. As you can see, assets are increasing along with liabilities, mainly due to the increasing pension liability that each district shares. Diving into the net position analysis here, this is just breaking up the net position into the three different buckets associated with capital assets, funds that are restricted, and funds that are unassigned. Here you'll see revenue over expenses district-wide. And as you can see, for the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenditures, which is a good thing, obviously, but another thing I wanted to point out here was that whenever the revenues increased, so did the expenditures, so you were using your resources as they were coming in to the district. Balance sheet trends for the general fund, again, this is solely the general fund. We have assets overall of liabilities and net position. Again, here we have revenues over expenses for the general fund. For the most part, revenues have exceeded expenditures, except for this past year, which was due to increased expenses on student transportation and staff support services. This is just informational, informational chart on tax revenues for the general fund. Taxes fluctuate from year to year, but for the most part, most of them stay pretty consistent here. And then, general fund revenues by source. At the top there, you have taxes and state revenues. And then, at the bottom, you have earnings on investments, federal revenues and other revenues. Other revenues include bus rentals, transportation fees, rebates. And then, obviously, the decline in earnings on investments is expected with volatile markets and interest rates decreasing due to the pandemic. And then, here we have revenues over expenses for food service. As you can see, expenses has exceeded revenues for the past couple of years, but there are some non-cash items included in these expenses, which includes depreciation and expenses related to the pension liability and the other post-employment benefit plan liability. Lastly, here we have some payroll information. On the left there, we have Boone County salaries, benefits, and on behalf payments as is associated to payroll compared to other districts that are similar in size revenue-wise. So you can see that Boone County exceeds the average of those districts. And then, another comparable graph is on the right there, where we compare salary expense to total expenses in the general fund, where Boone County has exceeded the other comparable districts to Boone County. And that is it. So if there's questions or comments, I'd be open to that.
Yes, I have a question. Do you have it available, we can see what those comparisons are with those other districts? Do you have the, the counties and the districts of where those are coming from? That's always been a question that I've been interested on.
We do have.
Having that in a chart?
Yes. I don't have it with me right now, but I do have that information, yes.
Okay. I think we would like to see that.
Any other questions? Good thing, sir. Item seven, recommend action consent agenda, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I recommend the board approve the consent agenda items A through W with the treasurer's report given by Mrs. Lynn Shield as presented.
We began the month with a cash balance of sixty million.
You should have you would come up to the microphone there.
She can't pick you up off the recorder.
We began the month with a cash balance of sixty million, twenty three thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars. Our total revenues for the month were twenty six million, nine hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars. We had total expenses of thirteen million, eight hundred eight thousand, five hundred eleven dollars. Our net increase in cash for the month was thirteen million, one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred eight dollars. We have an ending cash balance at the end of the month of seventy three million, one hundred thirty four thousand, three hundred twenty five dollars. Couple of highlights that I wanted to point out. We collected twenty five million in property taxes, one point seven million in occupational license tax, one hundred ninety four thousand in omitted taxes. And we made a transfer of a hundred ninety thousand for the night fund. Our debt service payments for the month were three hundred and eighteen thousand. I did want to convey a couple of good news items. We are not experiencing a negative impact that we expected. So that is good. And the state is conveying that as well. They, several months back, were telling the streets to expect a eight percent cut in a lot of their grants. And they announced revising their projections and telling us that those eight percent cuts will not materialize. We also received a couple of checks this month. One was a ninety one thousand dollar check that is called a dividend from our insurance company. Our insurance company is a mutual company. And those type of insurance companies can redistribute profits. We also received a return of money for two hundred and sixty four thousand. Over the last seven years, we've been making payments in regard to a judgment when the KISBID fund was dissolved. So we, we made total payments of close to one point three million dollars in what they were projecting is potential work of comp claims in the future. And we made a six hundred and fifty one thousand payment for property and liability potential claims. So that was good news. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Shield. Any questions from more of the, either the financials or the consent agenda? Actually, I need to take a motion. I kind of missed something. All right, so we have recommendation. Can I get a motion, please? In a second, thank you. We have motion in a second. Need discussion or questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions on a couple of the consent agenda items. Item JJ, which was the purchase by Mann Elementary of some microphone systems for their rooms. I understand that came from some of the CARES money that the city of Union gave over to the three schools over in Union. Will there be an adjustment in the budget to make that more equitable across the district? So it's not just three schools that are receiving benefit of that CARES funding?
Thank you, Mrs. Piles, for that question. That is something that we're looking closely at right now and how we can work through that issue. It was a generous gesture by the city of Union to donate some money to the local schools in Union. So we're wanting to make sure that we look at that across the entire district and see how we can make sure to make up some of that difference, if you will. That's not the right way to say it, but to try to address that and assess some other schools within our, within our district as well.
Okay, great. I did have another question on item NN, which was the contracting for equity consulting. Mrs. Miss Byrd and I attended a session at KSBA this past weekend where the Owensboro School District has made great strides with equity. And I'm wondering if that committee has spoken with, with that group or with that school district? And also have they consulted with the new equity officer with the state, Thomas Woods Tucker? Because his role is to consult with school districts also.
That's a very good question also. I've been in direct contact with superintendent constant at Owensboro on their work that they're doing. And I'm talking to Mike about that. And also been in contact with the company that is assisting them with some of that community engagement work. I've been in contact with that company as well. We've had a few conversations on some of the possibilities that may be in front of us. The Equity and Diversity Committee that we formed back in June when I first stepped on as the superintendent, they have participated with the AASA cohort for equity and diversity. And they're actually utilizing some of those schools from that company that is working with. Yes, we're very well understanding of that. We've also watched a webcast recently from the equity officer that was in place from the Kentucky Department of Education. So that's been part of our work as well. So we've made some significant work and significant commitment of resources, time and energy and personnel with the committee that we have in place that Mrs. Rupen is chairing. And including several employees from around our district at different classification levels to discuss issues of equity and issues of diversity. And I think that will only grow as we move forward. It may be something that we had to talk about in the school board in terms of making that work. The official committees of our district moving forward. But it's a topic that we spent a lot of time. I appreciate that question.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're seeing nine. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? You're not emotional carry. Okay, that brings us to item eight, old business. We don't have any old business. Item nine, recommended action, new business. Item A, Dr. Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I recommend the board approve demographics and growth, taking recommendations establishing the school district boundary of Steeplechase Elementary School.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Motion, please. Actually, who? Chair, shall motion this one or just we go into discussion and motion later? Yeah. So can I get a motion? Everybody's looking at me like I'm doing something wrong. Which is not out of our own possibility. Have a motion.
Is there a recommendation because I recommend you to the board of the scenario?
Yeah, the recommendation is to have discussion on the two scenarios. If we get to a point where we want to approve a scenario, we can re-recommend the specific scenario. So sorry. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Okay, so to open up discussion on this item, I want to answer a couple of quick questions. I think Ms. Gribble, is that the name right? So she asked about the stats on the schools, keep me honest, Mr. Ford. So if scenario one was adopted, Steeplechase would open at six hundred and twenty one students, seventy four percent free reduced lunch. New Haven would be at five hundred and ninety nine and twenty seven percent. Collins would be at five oh eight and eighty nine percent. Ackerman would be at six sixty one, which is what they're currently at, sixty eight percent, sixty nine percent. Scenario two would be five sixty nine, seventy two percent. New Haven stays the same. Collins stays the same. Ackerman would, the student population would go to seven thirteen. And the percentage would be seventy one and a half. So that's the stats. So as we get into the discussion, I just want to reset the committee work. I think there's a preconceived notion out there that either myself on the board as board chair or Ms. Ms. Byrd as a board member is kind of controlling all this. If you remember from the public forums, there's a diverse group of people within the district. So principals, administrators throughout the district. There's parents that were selected by the principals to participate. We have planning and zoning and people from the county that participate. These are people that care about our community. They care about kids. And they're not going to make a decision as a collective group to do something that is not good for kids. Now, is it the most popular thing in the world? It might not be. But we're going to talk through some of those issues right now. But I just want to make sure everybody understands this is not Matt's plan. It's not Karen's plan. It's not Mr. Ford's plan. It's a group of about fifteen people that worked diligently for several months. We listened to it in the public forums. And as part of our discussion, I will address what we heard in the public forums. So I want to encourage everyone that was not at the first public forum or that did not go watch the first public forum, to go watch the first public forum. It was very clear that this was for, for not everyone. I'm going to say the majority. This was about not wanting my kids to go to school with those kids. That's what this was about.
Very bad, very bad. Say that.
Watch the forum. That's all I can say. And that's my perspective. If you don't agree, then, then that's fine. But that's, that's my perspective. And I think it's, I think it's shared. So the second piece that I think we heard loud and clear was essentially that, you know, us, the board is a bunch of races. And so you're questioning our, our board. Okay, watch the forum and, you know. So I, I just want to, I just, I think that's, I think that's accurate what happened in that first forum. Now, the second forum, sure, it adjusted a little bit. There's a little bit different narrative. But that's what I, that's what I heard and I think others heard in the first public forum. So if we reset on what is the goal of this new school? Why did we build a new school? It's to, to give relief to New Haven and to give relief to Collins. So one of the things we heard at the public forums was we are creating or engineering a Title I school. If you take just the families or just the households inside of Steeplechase only, and if we only open the school just for Steeplechase families, the percentage would be thirty five percent. So that school on its own, just for that community opens with a family resource center, which is a great resource to add. And you're five percent away from being Title I. Title I brings a lot of great benefits, a lot of great resources.
What if we get triple crown there too?
We'll get there. So if we go back to why we're building this school, we're building it to relieve New Haven and we're building it to relieve Collins. So you've already, you're already at thirty five percent by that community by itself. When you go to start moving a pretty significant percentage out of Collins, the numbers, they move. Okay? So the other thing we heard was why are you protecting certain neighborhoods? This is going to be a great school. It's going to be a brand new state of art school. It's going to have a ton of resources for the reasons that we've talked about. Why would we want to protect somebody from one in that school? I don't understand that. So if you think about, we're relieving New Haven, we're relieving Collins. Just think about where they are on the map and where Steeplechase is. The first thing you do is you kind of geographically use the closest to the school. Right? So the New Haven, think about where they are on the map and where their whole district is. You start grabbing neighborhoods and streets. You do the same thing for Collins. And then it becomes a transportation and logistics question of how do we most efficiently do all this? So if you think about the map, some of the New Haven families are up and down that twenty five corridor. So are you going to pass them to pick up the Collins kids and then come back to Steeplechase? And are you going to, are you going to, are you going to take the New Haven kids that are over there and continue to drive past New Haven to get over to, I'm sorry, past Steeplechase to get over to New Haven? You're not going to do that. So you're going to grab the closest and you're also going to do the best job from a transportation perspective. And our transportation team has been a part of this the whole way. So Ms. Byrd, do you, do you want to pick up and speak into anything? And I'll, I'll shut it for a second.
I had asked. Mr. Barrick, our transportation director, to take a look again at the two scenarios that are before the board right now. They're still both up in the air. None of us know. How it's going to go because we haven't had our full conversation yet. And I'm talking about the mileage of why would you relieve Collins students and transport them seven miles to Steeplechase? Well, that's not happening. Yes, Collins Elementary is about seven miles from Steeplechase. But the students that we are looking at or have been looking at and considering in these communities, they don't live seven miles. So we're not busing them further. Actually, based upon my conversation with Mr. Barrick, and he can jump in and correct me at any time if I misspeak, his, his data and his statistics. We're, we're, we're transporting them not that much of a, of a longer distance, but we're also transporting them in a safer traffic flow by, by transporting them south as opposed to north. And if you don't drive that twenty five corridor regularly and the way that the industrial park area cuts that area kind of in half, it creates more traffic than people imagine in Florence on a two lane road. So transportation is about getting students to their destination and home again. But it's also about doing it safely and the most logical way to do it. And with all of our, the, the traffic patterns and we all realize Richwood Road is still going to be a mess for a little bit longer. But in looking at the plans for Richwood Road, Mr. Barrick's also said that that will make it even more of a better flow for those students in still going south as opposed to going north in, in those different scenarios. So we don't want kids on. So um, we don't want kids on, uh,
Okay, thank you for that. Couple other items and then we'll get into our broader discussion. So the other thing we heard was balance the free to reduce across the district or at least across more schools. For some of the reasons that Ms. Burr just talked about for transportation reasons, you know, we're not going to bus schools around, or students around the county just to balance and, and then engineer a school. It's just not, it's not what we're going to do. If, you know, look at what they do in Jefferson County and the nine-year notice for families. It's, it's brutal, having kids one hour each direction in the school. In a lot of ways, that's not just the free to reduce kids, you know, every kid would be in that scenario. A lot of friends down there, they drive, you know, their kids go from St. Matthews to the south side of the town. It's an hour on each way on bus. So it's not just prescribing, I'm going to send all these kids over to town that might are going to stay here in Walton. So would you want your kids going from Walton to Eberin every day? It's just, it's just not good for the kids, it's not something we're going to do. I think a couple of other things I'd like to ask Mr. Ford, if you don't mind. The other piece we heard was opening so close to capacity. And I'd like for you to mind us to share how KDE, sure, how KDE for a new building defines capacity. And, and what that really means to the operation of the school and the true capacity of the school.
Yes, Mr. McIntyre. Earlier this evening in the consent agenda, uh, the board approved a first reading of the district facility plan that is going to the Department of Education from the district's facility committee chaired by Dr. Ford. In that report, you see that each school is identified with a facility capacity. The way that works is the Department of Education takes specific rooms within a school building and from that square footage of each room identifies a certain number of students who can be educated within that classroom, um, based on that square footage. And from those specific classrooms, uh, the Department of Education, through their mathematical calculations, creates a facility plan capacity for the building. Now, granted, to introduce the construction of a new building, we have to identify the facility plan for that new building to the Department of Education and then it has to be included, uh, within the district's facility plan. And the district has met those demands per KDE standards. The school is set to be built at six hundred and fifty students. Yes, that says that's the facility capacity for classrooms. When in reality, there are several areas within a school that are not a part of that calculation. I'm going to use the gymnasium for an example. Obviously, you can take a gymnasium, split the gymnasium in half, and you can have two classes during a normal school year, uh, when the school's at full enrollment. And you could put potentially twenty-five students at one end of the gym, twenty-five students at the other end of the gym. You could put two classrooms and fifty children in the gym. That gymnasium is not part of that facility capacity, which is identified for classrooms. So what I'm getting at is because of rooms like gymnasiums, laboratories, technology rooms, art rooms, family resource center rooms, et cetera, you can actually realistically house more students within a building and not overcrow that building, um, to the point of being uncomfortable for both staff and students. Currently, we have several schools within our district that are over capacity when looking at that facility plan and the mathematical calculations that are utilized for the, uh, facility plan that have to go to the Department of Education. However, you walk through those buildings and they're not overcrowded. Cafeterias are constructed to be able to service the children um, in a very logistical, efficient manner to move lunch times through. Um, where students get thirty minutes for lunch every day when we're in a normal school year. And the, the buildings are not quote-unquote crowded to the point where children are on top of each other. So when we think about this, this number, we have, number one, room within for those areas that are not part of the facility plan that are identified under that definition, the Department of Education, and um, we have room to grow, uh, as well within that school. So I hope that answers your questions.
Yes, that's very good. One more for you a second, I just want to summarize real quick. So this is a state KDE calculation. It's the same for every district, so if you don't believe this, you know, you can go research this, this fact that there's plenty of square footage in a building that don't go into the official capacity and that the schools operate above and below that official state of capacity all the time. Now, with that said, you know, we don't want to open it any bigger than we really have to. Um, but I will also say, as a district, if you look out over the last fifteen years, we've op, we've opened almost, I mean, is it every school at capacity? It's just, it's just been our, our reality, and we've done it well. And I asked every educator on our committee, do, do you have pause at us opening if we were to open at six twenty-one? No, every single one of them said no, they don't have a pause. It actually gives you more resources in the building, it's all based on allocations anyway. So again, I take you back to that committee of compassionate, passionate, dialed-in educators, and they support that, and, and we would support it. Okay, Ms. Ford, I'm sorry. Okay, the, the road, would you mind speaking to the road? Because that's the other thing we heard about the one entrance, um, if you would mind giving us what you know on that, please.
Dr. McIntyre, at both public forums, uh, there was a presentation by one of the, uh, members of the community who came forward to address the committee, uh, establishing a concern over safety issues with having only one way in to the school and one way out, which, uh, right now is the intersection of Grand National Boulevard at Richwood Road, which obviously is the entrance to Steeplechase Community. The road, Grand National Boulevard, will run, obviously, all the way down to the new school. At the completion of the construction of the school, the road, Grand National Boulevard, will actually somewhat curve back behind the school uh, in order to meet areas of the school or loading dock, for example, and, uh, the pickup and drop-off of students by school buses. When that school project is completed and the road is constructed to that point, uh, it's been shared with me by, uh, our partners at the Boone County Planning and Zoning Commission that there is already in the works the idea of completing Grand National Boulevard from the area of the school all the way to Chambers Road. Um, technically, uh, I've been told by the Planning and Zoning Commission that we're talking about a half mile is all that's left once the road is completed to the school, to go from the school down to Chambers Road. I've also been informed by the Planning and Zoning Commission Executive Director, Mr. Costello, that because the school district owns the property, that the road will cut through. The negotiation will entail, uh, that of right-of-way from the school district to, uh, both county and state entities to, uh, contract for the completion of the road. I've also been informed, um, from Mr. Costello that, uh, in his conversation with Judge Exec Moore, uh, Judge Exec Moore has, uh, has in the works the, uh, capacity of ascertaining a grand, one project that will provide a significant amount of funding to go towards the completion of that road, uh, that last half-mile. Um, the timeline that I was chaired, quite less than two years. At that point in time, we will see Grand National Boulevard complete to Chambers Road, and therefore, we will have two entrances to, uh, Grand National, which will offer two, uh, a north and a south entrance to the school property from Richwood Road and from Chambers Road. So the idea of, uh, the, the safety issue has been significantly addressed already and is already, uh, even as the school is being constructed, is being moved forward this time, sir.
So are two years from school opening or two years from like now?
We were told it wasn't, it's not even, it is not going to happen.
Two years from school opening or two years from now?
And that was from Judge Moore.
I know, he told us not to.
I can only share the information that's provided to me by Mr. Costello, the Executive Director of Boone County Planning.
That is just a clarification on the two years, that's all I ask. Two years from now or two years from the school opening?
Uh, it's my understanding it's two years from now.
Okay, thank you.
That, yeah, that clarification will be provided by Mr. Costello at the Boone County Planning.
Oh, I'm leaving, I'm just asking a question.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ford, appreciate that. I, the, the only other thing, and I can, I can make this statement if you want, just keep me honest. Um, you know, we've opened, again, we've opened schools that have one entrance in and one entrance out right now. There's only one way down into Valasheneen, still, correct? Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
There's one way in there, there's no way to get past it right now. I think eventually that's going to connect out to Camper or Hathaway.
Camper's Hathaway area, yes, sir.
Um, I mean, it's just the way our county grows, it's the way, it's the way things go.
Thornwell Elementary School is in the same way. Now with the new interchange for Graves Road, that road project can be completed and then Thornwell will have the, uh, east and the west entrances to that community to, uh, be able to get to Thornwell. But it's been in the same situation until this completion of the Graves Road interchange and the new Graves Road.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Okay, so continuing our discussion on the multiple scenarios in front of us. Are there any questions, discussion items? Just as a reminder, there's a, there's a scenario one, which is the scenario from the public forums. There's a scenario two that takes a community of fifty-two kids that currently go to Collins to Akerman Elementary, um, as a way to open the school a touch, touch lower than, than the six twenty-one, that's really the, the goal there. Yeah, this, this is the board discussion time, so this is between us.
Are you going to, there was another question.
We've never been to the first scenario.
I think it's a very important one. Why New Haven drops to three hundred and seventy-five, a low capacity in scenario one, and three hundred below capacity in scenario two? I, I've heard what you said and I respect the information, I'm like, well, it's not really cool, but both of those scenarios bring New Haven well below capacity. And that was a question to ask in the first one.
So on the scenarios in front of us, New Haven stays the same, I think it's five ninety-nine. Their capacity is nine hundred, that's three oh one below. If you look at the approved lots to build in their district right now, it gets them up about a hundred or twenty-five below their capacity. And there is a pretty significant section at the front of Triple Crown that is being sold and going to be developed, and that's not in those, that's not in that number of lots that I just said. So that hasn't been approved yet, but it's expected. So that would bring them within probably fifty, uh, fifty-ish of their capacity. Okay, any discussion or questions on the two scenarios?
I just had, um, a few questions that have reached out to me and, um, I know I was not on the committee, so I, I've not been privy to all of the information that I want to have. I did receive a lot of emails, and so I'm sorry, Mr. Ford, thank you for taking, I forward to all of you, so I apologize, I still filter inbox every time I think of you. Um, some of the things, and this has come to my attention, that I, I keep hearing board charge, board charge, board charge. And one of the things I've realized with this redistricting is, and you may assume that in this board charge, this board broke this charge, I think this is a historic charge that has historically been around, I don't know how long. Um, and I guess my concern is that moving forward, I think the board charge should be addressed before the board, before every redistricting, so that we can look at comprehensive scenarios instead of a historic board charge. The best I can gather is from like nineteen ninety-two or something. But I think that's something I've, I've come to realize. Um, I think one of the things that I want to raise is that if we are, I know in the district we've been looking at equity, and I think that's a positive thing. I think if we look at either of these scenarios, we have to ask ourselves what resources will be available to the students in the school that will allow for equity for all of the students in that school. So we want all of our students to be successful, and we know that traditionally students who are, who come from socioeconomic backgrounds may have more educational resource requirements. So if we go about one of either of these two scenarios, I'm thinking a question needs to be addressed, how do we equitably resource and offer resources to that school? Um, the other thing that I think was brought up a number of times from, uh, communications that I received was I think it's very unfortunate that the parent representative from one of the schools was not a parent that was affected. Um, I don't know that there's a way to remedy that if it's a selection for the principals. I think the question should probably be asked in the future. Um, I know when you go into it, you don't know necessarily every family that will be impacted, so I understand it may not, I don't know in this case was it possible? Um, but I think that's something that needs to be, uh, looked at. And then, um, I, I think, moving forward, I think the conversations that have been had is to increase the transparency, and I think that's a positive route for the new things to form. So, um, I don't really go back in time and reassess the board charge, but I think that's an important question, is what is the board charge and where did it come from and where do we go from there?
Karen, you can run off, just do one more second. You don't have to do it.
Not that you were here that long ago, because you're only twenty-one.
It was, it was close, ninety-four, so, um, and I, I had this conversation with Mr. Ford that it was to be in mind and is known that this is a board charge. It was more or less, I think, an inherited district charge. Because when you're opening a new school, you have to district for it, and the mindset has always historically been, you do it with the least disruption possible to fill the school, um, keeping in mind your transportation routes and, and, and how can you do it? The first redistricting I went through, we didn't have planning and zoning assistance with their Nifty computer system. We had huge Mac in the county, you have to remember this. They had colored pens in it. And heaven forbid if anyone bumped the board and the pens went flying, because then you didn't know where the students were. And, um, but it was very visible that way. Um, but I, and Mr. McIntyre and the committee members who are here will attest to this. I brought up myself in our committee meetings that I did not think the scope of this redistricting or this charge went far enough in, um, answering, uh, a lot of the issues and questions that came up in the emails that we got and, and the comments in, in the public forum. I felt the scope was too narrow. I felt that we, um, were, um, I kept thinking that we needed to, to look further than we were looking and, and involve more schools overall. Um, that's not historically how redistricting has worked, though. Um, but I agree with you, Dr. Brown, that we need to, uh, be better in the future about encompassing that. Um, I know things have come up about involving the HOA. Um, that can narrow the focus, it could open the focus, but I agree that, um, generally, the principals get their parent volunteers, what get their parent volunteers, what their processes are, I guess it can vary from principal to principal. And sometimes it boils down to who's going to commit to those three, four, five, six committee meetings outside of the public forums. And we would meet sometimes an hour, two, two and a half hours each committee meeting. So, and go through each scenario. We started with three, that was another thing that came up, we didn't look at enough scenarios. But we usually start out with three. And then we start to pick them apart and with the GIS being able to, well, what happens if you move this community here and that community here? And you get immediate results, so it isn't done haphazardly. But I do agree that, I feel that our scope didn't encompass everything that it should have.
Okay, so that's good feedback and that's good transparency. So why did we as a committee stay the path? And I don't want to be the voice on this.
Well, we had a lot of seasoned educators in that room. Would you think combined, it's 125 years of experience minimum in education between educators that were in that room? And we, I feel, when I'm in that position, I'm not an educator. I'm, my training, I was a dental hygienist, I mean, I was heavy in the sciences and all of that, but I'm not a trained educator and we rely on their expertise. And when you have that many experienced educators helping you analyze and dissect scenarios, we kept getting the feedback that this would meet the needs of populating Steeplechase. And doing it in a fashion that would not be detrimental to the school, would not be detrimental to the community as a whole. And that children would be successful there regardless of probably a higher free and reduced lunch population than people may have been expecting for this building. But poverty can be a barrier, but it doesn't have to be and you can't assume that it will be. Because I firmly am, believe that whoever staffs that school, from the leadership on down, are going to ensure that that school is successful. And of that, I have no doubt. And we also believe that all kids deserve a chance at the best education and the best facilities that we can provide them. And you have to know the county as a whole to understand where the pockets are and some of them may surprise you. And again, you can't get into a quote unquote busing situation to try to alleviate that. That is not fair to stigmatize those children and cart them across the county in the name of equity to balance it. That's not equity.
Run a mall where he, we just want you to redistrict, et cetera, because our area is going outside of the area that us kids into our area. And that's, would be fine if, I don't know, if it was like more like outspread in our same area, but you're not, you're skipping three, four times over to get over and away and then let them into our school. That's what we're saying is wrong, is you don't need to redistrict and have your areas that are aligned with your school.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion items you'd like to bring up? Is there?
Can the board do a new charge?
Is there, is there a preference for a scenario?
Like I said, this came to a key point, too, if we go down.
Just a slow question, any cause for a relook at or review?
Frankly, I think we did that in our last meeting. In fact, at our last meeting, we actually said we need another meeting because we did not feel comfortable and confident. And that ended up with creating the second scenario that you see tonight because of shared concerns over capacity. I know I made a statement in the meeting one night that, you know, we've opened schools at overcapacity a lot, as if I, that didn't matter to me and it does matter to me. Having the distinction of having the largest elementary schools in the Commonwealth of Kentucky is not a distinction that I want. I want to have the best, but I don't want to have the largest. We carried that number one ribbon for too many years in a row between several different elementary schools, Beadham being one of them, Parkland Bed being one of them. So I like smaller schools, I like smaller classrooms and sizes. I think the instruction is better that way for all kids. But as you heard the explanation of what capacity really means and the fact that again, we have the experienced educators in our committee saying, we do this all the time, we know how to make it work. Should they have to? I don't think so. Which is why we looked at and had multiple conversations of, Mr. McIntyre had at least two conversations or more with the principal at Ockman Elementary School, who said, we're willing to take students, we're willing to help ease that burden at Steeplechase, which shows the quality of leadership we have in our district. So, yeah, I mean, we walked out of our meeting, thought we were done and we had so many questions and follow-ups from Mr. Ford, we came back at it again. And because we do want to get this right. And we can disagree on what ends up being the final choice, but know that we don't do anything unless we think that it's right. And if I can't sleep on it, then I want to bring it back up and fix it, which is one of the reasons we had a meeting that none of us were planning on, so.
Well, I don't want any more questions on it than you asked me to do this, Ford. I'm going to tell you, if that transparency you just exhibited has been given to us when we first started asking questions, it wouldn't have gotten to this point. We sent an information request to the committee and were told they didn't even have minutes, much less any information to back up the scenarios. If that transparency is fantastic, thank you. Had that been given to us at the beginning, it would have never gotten to the aggravating point we're talking. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions on either of the scenarios?
I guess my only comment is, I mean, Karen, I've been with you for eight years and if you say you can sleep with one of them, then I believe you, so.
It still doesn't make the whole district, right? When you have to stretch far away to grab kids from another school, miles away, just asking about all the kids in the middle, it still doesn't make the district, right? And if you truly feel that the charge was too narrow, issue a new charge?
Yeah.
Or open up or roll a form that would have you revise scenarios? But something needs to change. You've got schools that are way under capacity. You've got a couple of schools that are running high capacity. You need your district and rest of the whole district to make this right. Because just grabbing kids from another school becomes, I understand, a rather maybe help from those schools. But you're going outside of the whole area to grab these kids, which is, I mean, it's not right.
Kids are coming from three miles away. We have, you know, Mr. Barrett, you could, we've heard enough, okay? We're going to have our meeting, okay? Mr. Barrett, I mean, what's the purpose we take kids? Not just in this part of the county, but across the whole county? I mean, three miles is not a big deal, right?
You've got people half mile away that are on fourth or eighth grade.
Depending on the route, you've got some long routes where you've come out of Brad Ash, Town Hill, you've got some other factors, a little bit of road coming in the wild. We're looking at 10 miles in some papers, but it doesn't sound significant. It depends on roadway, the condition of traffic. In the case that we're talking here, from other communities we talked about, there's a 1.2 mile difference, a 0.7 mile difference, a 0.4 mile difference. Ideal traffic conditions, you're looking at a two to four minute difference. That's the difference we're looking at in this scenario.
So I will address the last question. I mean, the fact that there are homes a mile and a half, two miles away that aren't coming. We have, there's no one a half a mile in South Coast. I mean, I've driven it multiple times. No, it's not a mile. It's a mile to the front of your neighborhood. It's another mile, it's a mile or half a mile into the first homes where the homes start across the street. So it's called a mile and a half. So if you think about where those kids go to school currently, you grab the first homes there, right? There's a certain number that come from New Haven. And then we have to have room for the kids to come from college. So we can't just take 500 or 600 kids from that little area. We have to relieve the other school. So with all that said, does anyone want to make a motion on one of these two scenarios? Or would you like me to ask Mr. Ford, what would it entail to blow up the charge and restart? Is, can we open a school with the timeline in front of us? If we were to do that?
I guess the question would be, if we were to blow it up, would we end up with anything? Let's say we did one of the other. Or what are we as far as pointing the time to be able to open the school? Are we pushing it at that timeline? As far as in moment, starting the process and those sort of things? Because isn't there a deadline, Mr. Ford, where we really have to make it cut off in order for that school to open?
Mr. Paul, I answer your question from past experience. Been the DVP for Blue County Schools, this is my 16th year. First project I worked was Camper's Middle School. And every school since Camper's Middle Schools, opening and redistricting project. This project, to come to the point where we are now, with the committee coming together, started in April to reach this point now. There is still work to do. If the board tonight approves one of the two scenarios and the supplemental request along with the scenario in regards to current fourth grade students who will be promoted to fifth grade for next year as part of the same recommendation. The work that has to be entailed is still the notification of those children sometime between January and February, positively, allowing them to know that next year their school assignment has been changed. We do that in order to be able to create master teaching schedules, provide allocations of teaching staff, classified staff, administrative staff, support staff to the building. So what I'm getting at is this is not the end of the work. If the board moves forward, in my professional opinion, based on experience, if the board moves forward to scratch and go to a new charge, then Steeplechase Elementary School will not open next August. There's not a time. We'd have to start the process all over again, which entails development committee, committee meetings, board workshop, minimum of two public forums, et cetera. So I hope that answers your question. Again, I'm speaking from experience.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Same.
I guess the other thing I want to mention is, so sometimes the districting lines sometimes don't seem to make sense. So give you an example, I live over in Oakbrook. My house and my neighbor's house on the same side of the street, you wouldn't know any difference. My neighbor's house goes to Yealy and I go to Stevens Elementary. So sometimes those lines have to be made just because of capacity and busing and transportation. Stevens Elementary's district is Oakbrook. Oakbrook is how many miles from Stevens, Bob? Two and a half, three and a half miles. We don't have an elementary school in our neighborhood. We have to cross two highways to get to our elementary school. So Steeplechase is going to be blessed to have that in their neighborhood. We have schools that don't have that. The other thing I will mention, a number of times came up in the public forums was, it's going to be a Title I school, it's going to reduce our property values. When I moved into Oakbrook, Stevens Elementary, I believe, was 12% free and reduced. We're now just under 50% free and reduced. In the last three years, my property value went up 25%. So just because a school is a free and reduced school does not mean your property values will go down. The other thing I want to mention is, I've worked with the GIS department at the county. They have so much data, so much forward data with permits and things that'll happen in the next two to three years that we have no idea that's in their system that helps us do these projections. So it's not just based on what's there, what we see now. They know things years ahead that we don't know that helps advise us to get to the point in these plans to be able to get down to those two or three plans. When they're in the redistricting meetings, committee meetings, the GIS department is constantly running scenarios to get us the best options that we can for districting our students. Oops, I didn't have my mic on.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So what's the pleasure of the board? Does, is there a recommendation for a scenario? Or not, or is it one on the table?
Was there one that was more favored coming out of the committee, one or two? Or was it? No, neither way?
No, I think from a transportation perspective, number one was better. From a capacity issue, number two is better, obviously. So it boils down to, they are both, per Mr. Barrett's, from a transportation perspective, supportable and stable and can be done, can be done safely. But of the two, not having to transport north is preferred, if possible. If it can be, you know, the grandest of four. So, or what the board would choose to decide. And as a map, it's just what can we do to best for the school to be forward during the remainder of the year and study for the forms and find new solutions.
If I may, real quick, with all the good work you've done, do you really have to go back to formula on your agenda? You put a tape or apply to us, if you do that in front of your board?
Well, clearly the work isn't satisfactory for some people, so we'd be blowing it up. I mean, we'd have to blow it up and start over on a new charge. I mean, that's what we're being asked to do, is to go with a new charge. Expand the whole lens. I mean, Mr. Ford, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what I heard is if we just restarted with this same board charge we have today, we can't, we can't open. But if we were to, so if we stick with the board charge and we go try to redo it, we wouldn't be ready to open. If we opened up the board charge to say, we're going to look at the whole county or the seven or the county, whatever, six or seven elementary schools to balance this stuff out, we absolutely won't be ready. But did I understand that right or not?
Yes, sir. New schools? That, um, if new schools, yeah. If other schools were involved on the current committee, uh, like, yes, I have, like, a blackened, okay? Uh, current committee and representation from New Haven Elementary School, Shreve Man Elementary School, and Collins Elementary School, and Akron Elementary School. If, if a idea was developed to involve more schools beyond than out of respect, uh, then it would be almost the idea of starting over because we would have to invite out respect. We would invite new principals to be a part of a new committee. We would formulate a new committee and allow those new principals to select, um, parent representation to the committee, and that's where the committee could change. Uh, and it would be the formation of a new committee. And out of respect to those new members, um, then we would basically have to open up and do the work over to catch them up and then move forward. So it would be very comprehensive.
I think in terms of redistricting, also, we look at all the elementary schools throughout the county. The problem we're gonna run into is that there are sections, especially with Steeplechase, where you're not gonna have as much development over the next 10 years as you would in an area like Hebron or maybe some other areas in Florence. And I say that because I think Mr. Costello, Mr. Ford, correct me if I'm wrong, how many more lots were gonna be developed within Steeplechase? Was it somewhere between 30 and 40?
Uh, it was, it was 100. Uh, I had to show them with the other hand, which is not entirely, but 100, 125 lots, possibly, equating to somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 children.
50 to 60 children, okay. But even when that land is for sale, we're looking maybe decades. And I can tell you right now in Hebron alone, there's been developers that have been working through that development process for 25 to 30 years on a prediction maybe between 5, 10,000, you know, um, new families coming in that could equate maybe, I would say maybe 800 to 1,000 homes. That just didn't happen yesterday. It's just not for sale yesterday. That happened 20 to 25 years ago. So discussions we're having right now on trying to redistrict all these elementary schools, it's probably, if we had that discussion right now, it would probably take as long as starting even a new elementary school, and that would come about in the next few years. There, it's no way, it's not possible.
Why would man involve and not affect?
And then nobody can see what they can do if he takes one parent to the week.
Hey, is there, does anybody want to make a motion on one of the scenarios?
I would say if I had to pick one, I'm hearing capacity is a concern. So it looks like one of the scenarios addresses capacity more so than the other. And I'd say that as a parent who started a valley where I think there were almost 100 kids, there were 50 kids that didn't have lockers because we opened above capacity. So I know what that's like to wait for lockers and water companies and all that good stuff. So I hear capacity as one of the concerns, and it looks like one of the scenarios addresses that more readily than the other.
So let me just be clear on my question. You know, I'm, I'm leaving the board, so I'm not making a recommendation. You all, you all are gonna have to live with it, right? Mr. Fran is leaving. So the question is, is there a recommendation for one of this scenarios? Or do you want to go back to the drawing board?
Hey, board.
I had never been taking into consideration, I mean, going along with that friend. And when I had conversations with P W. Lorin and the families over at Collins, the Collins family.
You did there. The Collins families that are being affected are on the southern side. And those families have a tendency, when they do their shopping, they do their traveling, they go to the southern part of the county, they don't go north. And so I would lean more towards the first scenario where it is directing this, the, to the southern part of the county because that's naturally their community and where they're going.
Okay, this is fun. I'll ask a question again. Somebody needs to tell me, do they want to, do they want to recommend a scenario? Or do they want to recommend that we take it?
I understand because I read, you know, P W. Lorin, Mr. Lorin, the Collins principal, did mention the disconnect of his southern families. But there are ways to engage those as well. I lean with you, Dr. Brown, in the capacity concern because of, of having seen it happen too many times. And hopefully we're back to the normal start of school next year. And we may even be looking at more students returning to the buildings. So that makes capacity even more of a concern. So I would make a recommendation because I, I, I don't think in good conscience we can tackle this. We have to move, move forward. I, I, that, that doesn't mean we can't revisit looking at it. But, um, I would need someone to help me explain to someone who lives in Burlington why opening a new school in the southern part of the county is now making much, I'll have to change their school. So, um, I'm pretty eloquent, but would need help on, on just by that without more advanced notice to the community that we're gonna start dropping our scope. But that is something that the board can, can talk about in the future when we start up a new in January. So I would just make the motion that the board adopt scenario two.
I think it's a, needs to be a recommendation, right, Jerry? And then a motion in a second?
Okay.
The superintendent is the one that makes the recommendation. He can say, I have no recommendation to be deeper than something in the board, or if he makes a recommendation, he might be done. Regardless of if a board member can make a motion.
What he said, I make the motion that we adopt scenario two so that we can reopen, or that we can open Steeplechase Elementary School for the 2020, 2021 school year, or 21, 22 school year, I guess it'll be by that time. So that's my motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Two. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion will carry. Thank you. Item B, Mr. Turner, bus purchase for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay.
Does that motion include supplemental section? Sorry, they're rough, but I feel it's a very important factor because it doesn't impact children.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, thank you. Uh, that is a part of the, the pay, the memo that we received for both scenarios. So, so regardless of the scenario, we approve the scenario two. So the allowance for a fourth grader to be fifth grader to stay at their school next year is part of that recommendation.
Thank you for clarifying, sir, because my office.
And, and that was actually something that we meant to discuss a little bit earlier. I mean, that, that's gonna reduce capacity in year one a little bit, too. I don't know what our percentages usually work out to be, but it's gonna be 20, 30, 30 kids. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Turner, item B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board approve the bus purchase for the 2020, 2021 school year for a total of nine buses. Total purchase is $998,736 funded by the Transportation Department as presented.
Do you have a recommendation? Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Okay.
No motion in a second? Any questions or discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Turner, I can see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I recommend the board approve the 2020, 21 school calendar as presented.
Okay, a recommendation, do you have a motion, please?
Slipped. Seven.
No motion in a second? Any questions or discussion? I have a little quick question here, sorry. You'd mentioned, um, the request for potential days of early dismissal for planning, did that? Well, I just didn't know, I didn't see it in there.
It wasn't.
Okay. I just couldn't, I meant to ask you earlier, so.
I, I will say that, um, the, I'm on the calendar committee, and we, there was extensive discussion. So thank you, Dr. Brown, for leading that word with regards to the way that the PD days in the beginning of the year were very much favored upon. And I will agree, Ms. Bird, that everyone is crossing their fingers that August will be normal and we can kiss the schools and the teachers again. But, um, in the event that it's not, we will be prepared and well-suited to face any challenges we might run into at the beginning of the school year. And I think that that was appreciated to give them the flexibility to learn together, to leave that PLC work, and to get a really solid start off at the beginning of the year. So that was one of the things that was encompassed in this calendar as well. Um, there was some discussion about, um, looking at maybe some early release days to give elementary schools time to collaborate more with their PLCs. That was not encompassed in this calendar. There have been enough changes that have occurred thus far, and the committee did not move forward with that at this time.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Brown. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion will carry. Brings us to item D, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I recommend the board approve the job title, job description, and salary schedule changes from the chief operating officer, deputy superintendent, and chief of staff, deputy superintendent, as presented. I would like to read a message to the board for some context.
Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, we have a recommendation, do you have a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Need discussion. Mr. Turner.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick note, uh, with some context and additional information for, for your understanding of this position. Part of my proposals and my plans on taking the position of superintendent earlier this year were to raise expectations for our entire school district to streamline processes and also provide support for our schools and our departments as we move forward. The next two agenda items, this one and the one following, are part of reorganizational work in our district departments. Since we're in our first six months in this position, I place additional responsibilities. There's some needs on these three positions to address the larger needs and the larger goals in our district and for all of our schools. Uh, I want to be clear that I'm not proposing that we add more positions to the district staff. I'm not proposing that we adjust the compensation for these three specific positions at this point in time for the proposed comprehensive changes in their job descriptions. These changes will yield a net gain overall for our school district in the long term. The capacity and the productivity of these positions and the positions for whom they serve in departments and schools will significantly increase, and therefore the overall expense to the district will go down in the long term. The overall expense of these changes is small relatively, speaking to the overall budget of our school district. These changes are also comparable to other districts similar in size in terms of position titles, their responsibilities, and their compensation. One singular charge for our district has been for us to operate the system of schools and not a school system. And that means that each department and each of our schools must closely collaborate within their own part of the organization, but also closely collaborate with the rest of the organization for higher efficiency. Our schools and our departments must therefore find more time to work closely together to share information and strategies and focus on our central work in our district, which is raising student performance. I just want to point out two of the many changes that are in these three job descriptions as examples for, for your understanding of. The human resources director, for example, will be tasked, already has been tasked, quite honestly, to recruit and retain the first workforce, including the creation and implementation of an exit survey for employees with the purpose of increasing employee retention. Additionally, the HR director is tasked with establishing and maintaining strong relationships with our schools and departments in order to help them select, train, and retain the best employees possible. And I just want to point out that the best way for our principals to be as effective as possible and to raise student performance is for them to spend as much time as they possibly can in the classrooms and working with their teachers in the classrooms. Therefore, if we can streamline and make the human resource processes in each of our schools and our departments more effective, more efficient, then our principals and our leaders can have more time and energy to impact and assist the work of their employees on the front lines with our students. Similarly, the finance director is then tasked to provide additional oversight, training, and support to all schools and all departments. Following the thinking of that previous example, if we can find ways to train and support the leaders on the front line and the principals in our schools in completing the necessary important financial work, then they can spend more time in the classrooms, in the work sites, supervising employees, assisting employees, collaborating with their employees about serving the needs of our students. So this is one step in a process to truly work hard to evolve as an organization in, in providing as much time as possible for our leaders out in our schools and in our departments to effectively work as much as they possibly can in the classrooms, in the work sites, with employees, providing feedback, giving instruction to them, rather than spending time in their offices, having to work through all the necessary issues to hire employees, to work through budgets, where we have those organizations, then provide that support to them, to help better train them, train their staff, to do that work with them. So in closing, these changes are immediately necessary, in my opinion, to continue the important work of improving our school districts in every way possible by streamlining the work of our organizations from, from top to bottom. And again, this is just one step in what I see as a larger piece, and one step that we've already put into place with people, uh, in, in our, in our offices now doing this work. So I'm trying to catch up to that work and also moving forward with what will come later on in the strength course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. So I'll open it up for discussion or questions. I guess my first observation would be, you know, realizing that this is kind of a first step in an organizational kind of realignment focused on the schools and the students. You know, if we were to approve this, you know, I would, I guess on behalf of the board, since I'm gonna be around, on behalf of the board, I would like to ask that this, there's, you know, the ultimate result of any streamlining is net neutral to, you know, savings. I know you, you've pointed out that you're not adding positions and there's no expectation to do so. But this would be kind of a step out in faith that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna ultimately deliver a net neutral a little better behind my ask if, if this was to be approved. But any comments or questions?
I just think it's important to, I just want to say, I think it's important that this is, this is something that we've had discussion on a while back. I know that we're writing it in the year as far as. I know that we're writing it in the year as far as these decisions for this. But you know, this is important. This is one thing that we would do a super intensive slashing and putting faith in what is in Turner to make this a reality as far as streamlined to what he wanted. See this cabinet, see this office be. I know it's taken quite a few more months than we wanted, but it's better now.
Any other discussion items or comments?
Don't want to, I want to make sure that no one misunderstands where I'm coming from here. Because everyone associates people with positions, and as a board, we cannot look at people. We have to look at positions. And yes, Troy, I agree. You know, we've had some conversations before, but the first that I, as a board member, heard we were going to start implementing restructuring was when I looked at the board packet in preview stage last week. That, in my mind, is not a good way to operate. I've been through more redistrictings, yes, and I've been through more restructurings than everybody else here combined as a board member. And that process cannot be done without the full board engaged and involved from the start to the finish. Yes, when we hired Mr. Turner, we knew and expected that he would want to put his stamp on the district office and look at a restructuring plan that would fit his vision and his leadership. That's expected. But as a board member, it's also expected to be part of that process. And the reason that I find these items tonight before the board problematic is the board may have had some conversations along the way, but we have not collectively worked through this like we normally do with full transparency, full input, disclosure, rationalizations, justifications, and all of that that goes along with this. The reason I don't want this misunderstood is it's not saying that I believe that district office staff shouldn't have advancement potential. I firmly believe that they do. I do not think that people should do this for free. They should be compensated as well as they can be with our budgetary limitations. But I had a very wise grandmother who said, there's a right way to do everything, and if you do it the right way the first time, you don't have regrets. And this, in my opinion, is not the right way nor the right time with so many families in our district struggling, with so many families losing jobs, with so many families in uncertainty. Yes, our budget forecast for next year is better than expected. But as bad as I hate to say this, we're going to be under the repercussions of this pandemic, not for a few more months, but for a few more years. My personal prediction is a minimum of three, maybe five, for full economic recovery. And the hammer may not have dropped in 2021 on the budget, but it could very well easily drop in 2022 or 2023. And one of the mindsets of a lot of the earlier boards that I've sat on has been to make decisions that take into consideration of what we are binding future boards to. And one of the reasons, as I discussed this with Mr. Turner earlier today, is that some of these positions were taken from certified to classified was sustainability. And what you can afford today, will you be able to afford it five years from now as those salaries compound and increase? And as certified staff members retired, we didn't boot them out. As they retired, we changed those job descriptions and opened it up to people with experience outside of the education world, who brought a whole new wealth of perspective into our district and gave us new ways to look at things. And it also made the district office more financially sustainable so that we didn't have to look at reductions and eliminations and even more, you know, job loss or heavier loads. Our people carry a heavy enough load as it is. But I find it problematic that we're not looking at the bigger picture in this. My analogy today with Mr. Turner is if you focus on the trees, you lose sight of the forest. You lose sight of the big picture. And I would prefer that none of these positions are dealt with tonight. I can't support them in good conscience without that full discussion and involvement of the board with a complete picture of where Mr. Turner wants to take the restructuring of the district office. There may be other director-level positions that may need to be reevaluated that touch all areas of the district, as he said was part of his justification in looking at this. We have multiple areas within our central office that touch all areas of the district too, not to minimize the work of the positions currently under scrutiny because we're looking at them. But it also, in my mind, is saying something negative to those that aren't on the list. And I know that's not the intent, but that's going to be the perception. So me personally, because of the way that this has been presented to the board, with no disrespect intended for Mr. Turner, I can't in good conscience at this time with this manner support any of these.
Any other comments?
I agree that the whole overall structure needs to be looked at and not just certain particular positions. And I'm going to tag on to what Ms. Bird said, that this has nothing to do with the personnel and the positions. Being a business person, it's part of process of evolving organizations to constantly be looking at positions, to be doing process improvements. And that all needs to be rolled in together with transparency and us all working together to understand the overall structure, to make sure we're the most efficient in every manner that we can be. So I agree with my colleague.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? I would like to ask Mr. Turner, what would that look like if we took a step back and reevaluated the bigger picture out of the game?
I think the last thing now, after hearing both of our board members' comments, is to table this and to look forward to a larger conversation and deeper conversation on it to have an over period of the next few months. I just think to be very transparent is to make sure that we're all on the same page. That's what we need to do. So that would be my recommendation.
Does he have anything different, Chair? Since he revised his recommendations.
Let's declare table.
Just, okay, we're going to table item D. And we will table item E. And that brings us. That brings us to item 10, our superintendent's report with Mr. Turner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point in time, I would like to ask Mr. McCarter, our Chief Operating Officer, to come forward to give a short report on the Operations Division of our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'd like to give a brief update on our operations going on in the district currently during the situation that we're in. And our food service continues to serve meals throughout the weeks. I'll give you an example of one week. We served over 55,000 meals, breakfast and lunches to our students. And we do have on weekly weekend, our weekly Wednesday pickups, seven breakfast meals and seven lunch meals provided to all students that would like to get them between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And I'd like to thank Stephanie Caldwell and her team for making that effort to make sure all kids are fed. Our Transportation Department, obviously, we're not running our buses at this point, but we are continuing to have PD for bus drivers during safe, with safe schools. We are continuing to maintain our blessed bus speed, bus fleet at any time. And we are continuing to support our instructional models that we may have in the future as far as routing for small group construction that we may make it into after the new year. Our Facilities Department continues to complete all work orders throughout the district, and our construction projects are moving forward, with Steeplechase Elementary being one of those. Our turf fields are being under construction as we speak, and the new out of corner of Boone County High School. So all those projects are moving forward. Our Human Resources Department, as was mentioned earlier tonight, we are in need of bus drivers, parent educators, custodians, and substitute teachers. So I would encourage anybody to contact Mr. Matt Rig at our HR Department if they're interested in helping us out. And finally, you have the audit tonight, which we did great in as usual. And I'd like to thank Linda Shield for all of her work in her department. And if you have any questions for her, we can contact her or me at a later time. I'd also like to thank Dr. Corey for his work with the construction projects during this time because it's very hard. Even our construction crews deal with COVID, but our projects are still on time. So I want to thank him for his hard work and Dan Razer as well. And I'll obviously bomb various of our Transportation Department and anybody else I've missed in the operations areas. So that's a really brief overview, very quick, and that we've been here a long time tonight. But during the pandemic, things continue to move, and things continue to move forward. So I just, thank you.
All right, a quick question. What are the details on meals during the break? Are we providing 21 days of meals?
Yes.
Or are we not doing?
Yes, yes, we are. We're doing 21.
And when does that happen?
We're doing, next Wednesday, they're delivering 20. Anybody can get 21 days worth of meals.
Anyone that wants.
Sign up, start tomorrow.
Next, we'll have Dr. Bradford and Ms. Watson come forward and present a report from the Academic Division.
Good evening. I'd share a couple of updates with the board. First, I'd like to share with you about a state grant that all districts have received regarding last mile internet access. So as a result of that, we are in the process of hotspots related and providing that service for our students and families of low income. So we're in the process of distributing those to our families. We first started with our Title I schools and our CEP schools. So we're about two-thirds of the way through distributing that. So that is an access and opportunity for our kids and for our families that is much needed. So that is currently happening. This has taken a lot of time and effort, a lot of collaboration with our student services with the scrutiny's office, with our first coordinators, our first D coordinators, Mary Ann Rankin in technology, and of course, Title I. So really, that's very positive. So we plan to share some more good news with Ms. Brady and get some news out to our entire community specifically once we complete that. I also want to share with you all that the second piece is about targeted small groups. Our State Department, Department of Education has put out guidelines to all districts about targeted support services for those schools and for districts to use. So we put together and convened a group of eight principals that reached across all three levels and all four clusters, six district leaders, really focused on how we could implement those guidelines. And with working with transportation operations, we plan to start transportation in small groups starting January the 4th. And around a couple of big areas, criteria that our principals have given, have already been aware of, is around access and opportunity for our students, and also to support academic supports as well as SEL supports that our students need so that we can get as many, touch as many students as we need in this really challenging time that we have. So that's really just a high-level view of the two big pieces I wanted to share with the board. Any questions that you have, be happy to try to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you. I just want to add to his comments that we've had conversations with the Boot Penny Judge Executive, his team. They are working on a extended five rock pick, handling in parts unserved and underserved parts of our county. So we're very grateful for that work with them to be able, over the next few years, to provide internet access to some, whether more rural parts of our county and some of the underserved parts of our county where there may not be the strength of network signals. So that work is going on, and hopefully, we'll be seeing some changes in that here within the next six months to a year or so, since that, though.
It's been a long night and it won't keep you very long. Just a couple of other teaching and learning updates, though. So we do, we are working on improving that virtual instruction. That is a very, very heavy lift. Our teachers are heroic in what the efforts that they're putting out, but we're always trying to grow and improve. So we're working collaboratively. We have six principals, six district office, learning support, staff members on a task force working on a 30, 60, 90-day measurable plan going into second semester. So collaboratively, in the first 30 days, January through January 31st, here are some action steps that this task force is defining: student, teacher, leader. So, and all collectively. The 60-day plan and 90-day plan are not fleshed out yet, but that's going to be more differentiated by level, more differentiated by supports that the schools individually need. So the virtual learning plan, we have a great draft of that. And now we're in the feedback stages where we're seeking some feedback from principals by level, and we'll be rolling that out in January. We also have a targeted remediation plan we're working on. So thinking about just the fact that we have students unengaged, and if we have students, especially high school level, if they have an I, what are we doing for those students? Obviously, our data says we have a significant amount of those right now. So what is the root cause? We're really diving into that. We know lack of engagement is a huge root cause for that. So we're coming, based upon our plan for second semester with timing, in-person instruction, and virtual, we're trying to make sure that we're adapting that targeted remediation to what the models are. So that really folds into what Jason talked about with the targeted small groups, but it also is relevant for AP, it's also relevant for, you know, four days in person. So we're working on that right now. So we're getting that group organized. That'll be, again, principals and district office staff. So that's just an update from me. Any questions about those two big rocks?
Jenny, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
You mentioned teachers, principals, but right now, families and parents are serving the role of teacher very strongly. How about involving parents in those committees? So we have parent voice there. This has to be a collaborative effort. This has to be a collaborative effort. Can't, we can't stay in our educational silos.
Yeah, happy to do that. I think it's, I would have to rely on the principals to find out, you know, put a plan in place to how to get those stakeholders. But definitely, we do have an in-the-plan parent voice as far as some of the teachers are parents. So that's been kind of the dual role that some of them have placed. But yeah, we'll definitely, we'll definitely include that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that comment.
And then Jason, on the hotspots, how many hotspots have we distributed? And how many devices do each hot spot just support?
Those are great questions. I'll answer those the very best I can because Mary Ann's not, not here. So how many? We purchased eight hundred and forty hotspots. We have distributed about three hundred hotspots thus far, but we're in the process of going school by school. We have a methodology, basically, we have to follow our rating server based upon our student, our needs of our students and our families. And so those hotspots are, they are linked to a student's laptop, our devices. And so then it's secure, so we can able, if there's multiple students or siblings within one household, they can use that hotspot because of the, the data that we can support and provide. So a few specific details. Mary Ann Rankin, if she were here, she would be proud of me to be able to share all those specifics. So anything more than that, I'll leave and invite her further.
Next will be, Mrs. Ruben, you will present a report on the mental health and wellness of our students and employees at this time.
First, I need to let you know something. Our district health coordinator or director of health services has rendered her resignation. So we are in the process of looking for another highly qualified person to take that position. So that is in process and we'll continue to do that until we get someone hired. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Wolf, as well as all of the nurses for stepping up during this pandemic and going far beyond any expectations that they had of a job of school nurse or that we had as a job of school nurse. So they've done a great job. We do have twenty-one nurses. They've made a major difference in what's going on in our schools. Second thing I'd like to say to you tonight is we have a program called KenVote. And I know that you remember voting on that. And about three years ago, we talked about the need for two-way communication with many of our families because of the need for parent engagement. We right now have five schools involved in KenVote. Jones has been the one at the longest amount of time. Boone County has come aboard already this year, as well as Offerman Elementary. We expect Collins Elementary and Florence Elementary to come aboard next. So not only is it two-way communication, the immediate thing that happens if a student or his parents have another language, first language other than English, is it translates immediately so that I can reach out in English to someone who speaks French and they can reach back to me in French. So all the way down to the teacher level, that communication can occur. Also looks very closely at our attendance processes. But I wanted to update you, and you have a folder in front of you. In there is information about KenVote and about some of the other things I'd just like to touch on. Last month, we talked a little bit about our E A P, our employee assistance program. After that meeting, I got the first quarter report. And we do have parents, excuse me, and staff taking advantage of that. We had a good amount from August to September. And the ideas that came up or the concerns that came from those people and who were addressed were depression, some marital relationships, some financial needs, some concerns about family and their children. So we've got that going on. We'll get a better report by the end of December and, and I will provide that to you. I may not have to talk to you about it, but I will provide it to you. When you look at the mental health of our staff and our students, it's not only around depression and grief and that kind of thing. It's about the traumas that are happening along with COVID and along with the things that are happening within their families. So across time, since July, we had a committee that worked on mental health and self-care and trauma-informed care for our employees. So we have provided strategies out there just as a, a condition for helping them. But our school counselors and family resource centers and our school psychologists have also developed plans around how to take care of our, our staff. I have put in your folder, not only some of the strategies, but also an outline of what the counselors have done with their spirit committees, just to keep people able to take a mindful minute, to recognize someone with kindness, to use some of the SEL work that they learned for students with our staff. I know myself, I, I went away the other night thinking, oh, my gosh, it's blah. So figuring out how to take care of myself in order to take care of others is what we're helping others to do. We do, will continue to depend on our E A P when we have someone in crisis or our Kentucky Education Health Program. I couldn't get you data for that because they only take, are reporting data as a full state. We do have, and in your folder, you do have a list of our community partners. We have eleven mental health partners right now that either do in-direct service or do telemed services. That can be for students as well as staff. And one thing I do have, I have one ask for you guys tonight. Please take care of yourselves, relax over the holidays, and know that you're only as good as your own self-care. So thank you. If you have questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruben. I would say she always asks you how you're doing.
And you, and you don't just say it like, how you doing? It's like, you want a response, like you're waiting for a response. So that's pretty cool how you do that. I just wanted to ask you about the mental health summit. So we have eleven folks or eleven organizations that we work with real closely. And you had that great summit in March, April, what, gosh. Is that on for virtual or how are you doing that this year?
We're going to start that process in January, so it'll probably be later in the year. We're hoping that we wouldn't have to go virtual. But have, and participating in other summits that have gone virtual and that worked out really well. So yes, I'm hoping that our group will, for Boone County group will get back together again in January and start those plans.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ruben. And now finally, I want to talk just, just for a couple of minutes, just about the second half of the school year that we had sent out to all employees and to all parents, just providing a little bit more information and context. And we sent that out really to try to communicate a rough draft to our employees and our families on what the second semester, the second half of the school year may look like and how we're planning to potentially move forward with, with our processes and with instruction. And so we have to make sure that we do that safely. Based on what we know, what we've learned here in this half year leading up to this point. You know, our priorities have not changed. And we're very concerned about the academic growth of our students, about our health and physical well-being, our students and our employees as well. And we'll do everything we can to provide as much in-person instruction for our students as is safely possible for our students and employees. Unfortunately, it just appears that we have a long and difficult winter in front of us with this pandemic. The infection numbers and virus in our community have just grown significantly since we have been in-person earlier this month. And they've grown to high levels that are, levels that are impacting our hospitals, they're impacting our businesses. And they especially impact our school's abilities to operate safely because we already have people organization where we have adults serving the needs of students and working with students. Many of those adults, second career employees, some with special healthcare needs, some with unique situations. We also expect that we may have to have a buffer right after the New Year's coming back. We've seen significant spikes in cases in our community after each of the holidays. We're still amidst a leave from the Thanksgiving holiday. And so there are some, there's some anticipation amongst the medical community that the spike after the Christmas and the New Year's holiday may be even worse than we're receiving now. So that two-week window that we've kind of potentially put out there, and hopefully we don't have to use that, but we are expecting that we may. You know, we need our help, we need your help, I should say, from, for everyone to return to in-person instruction by living, social gatherings, being very careful, following the safety protocols that we use in our schools, wearing face masks, practicing social distancing, washing hands, cleaning common surfaces. You know, we also expect that we may have to use a hybrid model to reduce the numbers of students in our schools. And that means we will absolutely do that. The things that we're expecting, we may have to be ready to go that route to reduce the numbers. And we can ensure the safety of both our students and our staff. Infection numbers continue to remain extremely high. We also expect that we're going to transition to four days of in-person instruction. That's what we want to do. That's our goal to use that point. We have to make sure that we do that safely. And that would be depending on the overall conditions, including those infection numbers that we just mentioned. We do take into consideration the mental health and well-being of our students, the academic progress of our students. And we are seriously concerned about that. I, I can think I can speak on behalf of every teacher and every person that works in our, in our organization. We're extremely concerned about that. And any accusation that they don't have those students at the center of their desire to get back into school and try to help those students, I think they're sadly mistaken. So I just can't emphasize enough that this is simply a rough draft, general framework of what the second semester may look like. You know, my goal in that is just to communicate that plan so that everyone knows with full knowledge that we will have to make adjustments based on the current situations, that we have to limit transitions as much as we possibly can because we know how stressful, how difficult those transitions from instructional models are. And lastly, I just want to just reemphasize, we need to, we need everyone's help in returning to in-person instruction. As I said earlier, wearing face masks, practice social distancing, washing hands off, cleaning common surfaces out in the community or in their homes. We need your help to get back into school as much as we possibly can. All of us, we agree with the CDC and other agency entities, they're calling for schools open to students. We just also have to make sure that we recognize, however, they're not saying that we're going to provide in-person instruction regardless of the infection numbers that are in our community. They are recommending that schools get students in the school safely however they possibly can by using different instructional models, focusing on the safety protocols that we have to have in place, staying home with your dad sometimes, wearing masks, practicing social distancing, washing hands, cleaning common surfaces. If we all do those things together as a community, we can give all of our students an ignore and bore for in-person instruction. We just have to make sure that we understand, being a people organization adults serving students' needs, that we have to make sure that our adults are healthy and our students are healthy in providing those services. So again, our, our goal is to provide as much in-person instruction as, as much as we can and as quickly as we can. However, we can't ignore the difficulty of the pandemic that's in front of us. Just wanted to, to speak a little bit about that, that message of doubt. That's the framework that we had in place after a lot of consultation with people in our organization about what we think is going to be feasible, doable, and workable. And I look forward to working with them on making that, uh, in, in place next year. And hopefully, we can get moving quicker rather than slower. Thank you.
Any comments or questions on any of those presentations?
Yeah, I had a question with Mr. Turner. Have you? I know I've been trying to keep up with some of the conversations that have gone on with the governor, Dr. Glass, and K V E. And I'm, some of them sound really ominous with regards to what they're going to play next week. Have there been any discussions or agreements about what they might be proposing? I always get scared when he says new requirements.
Hang on, just one second there. There have been some discussions. I'm not sure there's much for public forums to say, but I guess what I can probably say, there's been a lot of, a lot of concern, just the dimensions with the situation at hand and how difficult things may be during this winter. That did inform some of our framework and how we were anticipating we may have to have a buffer. We may have to seriously consider what we do after spring break. We may have, as a board, discussed changes in our calendar and how we want to move further into the summer. Consider looking at spring break and changing things there. Those are complicated topics there. I would not be surprised if there's some type of message of, I'm not sure whether it would be a recommendation or an executive order on what the state or Kentucky Department of Education thinks that would be safe, thinks that would be prudent. So I don't know if that's going to come or if it will form it and make them. There is room for this on the board.
Dean, what else? So I've got some comments I'm going to make later, but just, Mr. Turner, since you just spoke into that, it's definitely hard. I would just advocate that we have to take a balanced view. I know I'm kind of speaking to the choir here to a degree, but it needs to be said that we can't only focus on the COVID numbers in the community. Schools have proven that they can open and be successful. That's just, I mean, we've seen it here locally, we've seen it regionally, we've seen it across the country. I know it's not easy. I know the biggest challenge is the sickness among the adults. But, you know, I get nervous when we, I'm not saying we, we, I'm saying we, the community at, at large. But even we, on board and in the district, who are very focused on studying how we get people back. There's a difference in the perspective you bring when you're saying, how can I just stay closed? Versus how can I, how can I get the schools open no matter, no matter what, at all, at best case possible? And that's the perspective we take. That even we will sometimes get too focused on the numbers. So let's, please don't do that. It's got to be more than the COVID numbers. It just has to be. And I'll, I'll touch on that a little more later. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you for that.
I was just going to say, speaking of numbers, I received updates from Jones Middle School's principal, Ryan Montgomery, of what's the work that they're doing in their building. We saw Dr. Hickey here tonight, recognized her for completing her doctorate. And I'm probably going to get the timeframe wrong because all these days run together. It was a week or two ago, he put out that their staff at Jones Middle School had ninety-seven percent attendance. So hats off to Jones Jets and, and the staff there and their, their dedication and they're showing up at ninety-seven percent attendance. So salute.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner and team on sharing the information. So that brings us to item eleven, information proposal communication. Does anyone have something they want to share? I know Mr. Fryman and I are going to give a couple of closing remarks as well. Is there anything else along the line?
I just have a couple of things. One, thank you to Mr. Barracks for very informational and delightful visit the other day out to the transportation department. It is very impressive, the process, the procedures, the meticulous records that are kept on all the employees, all the buses, the inventory. I kind of chuckled when I saw the, the disposition or the, the list of cleaning out the inventory in the back room. I saw the guys had been working at it. Just super impressive operation out there. So thank you for what you guys do. I also went over and visited with Mr. Wilson at Cooper High School. Had a great visit with him, talked about different concerns of opening the school, the wellness of the staff, just talked with him how he was doing, spent a few hours over there. I'd like to congratulate the Rotary Club Teachers of the Year this year. We held a ceremony out at Ignite Institute. We held a ceremony out at Ignite Institute, so thank you to Ignite for being the host. This year it was Pat Morgan at Mann Elementary, Jamie Hubbard at Connor High School, and Stacy Owens with the Elma Academy. And then I think it was last week, Friday and Saturday, we had attended the KSB Winter Conference, and that was all virtual. Great sessions. I enjoyed it. I had my mandatory hours in, so I got to go to sessions that were of my choosing and attended a session on supporting homeless students, learned a lot about that. And a great session, I think I mentioned earlier, on Equity with Owensboro. Also at the Northern Kentucky Education Council had a fall convening a couple of weeks ago. And the new Equity Officer for the state actually was in our Boone County room, and we had some great discussions about equity in that room. So I'm glad to see Equity rising to the top in our discussions and being on the forefront.
It's not going to happen tonight. Yeah, yeah. I just want to say that as far as the board goes, and especially for Michelle and Jamie that's not here, and definitely Karen, it's been an honor to have the opportunity to serve on this board. As you all may know or may not know, you know, when Representative Massey was taking his position, you know, as a state rep, we needed to fill the position in Hebron. And he called upon me. He knew I was involved in the youth, and even though I work in local and state government across the country, it at least gave me an opportunity to give back for a little bit. I knew that it was going to be a short stint. I did have one thing in mind as far as on my agenda, as you all well know, of what I wanted to accomplish. And, and I got to speak to a little bit about that. But, you know, obviously I was appointed by, you know, one of the former commissioners, KDE, for one year, which was last. And of course, this year I ran a short election for this year. I will say that with Dr. Schuster coming in, you know, I've had multiple conversations with her. She's had multiple conversations with you all, Mr. Turner. I know that she's going to meet with you soon. I do plan to try to have her in some schools with me. The problem is, is that she's not going to be in the schools, the students are there. So she's looking, maybe doing that over the next couple of weeks prior to, you know, her taking the position in the Hebron area. She's an advocate in the HBA for the Hebron Business Association. She's passionate about what she's going to be bringing to the table. What we've talked about is she needs to be sure that she takes that passion of what she's got in Hebron and North Point and realizing coming into this role, it's a bigger role than just that area. It's the district as a whole. And obviously, the district doesn't operate without individuals like yourself in this room. I mean, there's a lot of history here that I could go around and tell stories on, you know, and, and I got, I got to be frank, a few of the most highly people I think of is the gentleman back there with the mask on, Mr. Hall. First time he was my dare officer back in the eighties. And the stories of what he was able to share, even though he's a movie star for the movie you played in with Tom Cruise. But then, you know, Kathy Reutman, of the stories that I could tell you about her, these are two of the heroes that I have in this district. And there's many more. I mean, you know, we heard Mr. Doosie talk earlier about Mr. Ryle. That was a family friend of ours. And the list goes on. It goes on. But where I want to go with this is that, you know, I was happy with some of the opportunity with the selection of the superintendent. It was daunting. I mean, we met, even though it was on the front end of the COVID, we met multiple times, multiple times, multiple times. But I, if I had to do it ever again, I'd probably want to meet more because it was just an honor to be in those rooms and those chambers with you all to go through and debate. We didn't always agree, and that's what this board's about, right? We're not in a position where we're, we're always going to agree on things, but at the end of the day, we do respect a heck of a lot of each other. And what I can tell for the board members coming in from both respective districts is that, you know, as my colleague, Ms. Ms. Karen said there earlier, is that, you know, you just don't look over, you know, the garden or just trees. You see the whole forest. And they're going to have to be ready for that, and I think that they will be. I do think that there's still a lot of work to be done, knowing that our board chair, Mr. Turner, based upon what Mr. McIntyre's done, you know, from being this past year and having the opportunity to work close with him this past year and obviously seeing what, what Ms. Burr did last year as our board chair. I know obviously Dr. Brown's going to step into that and be a rock star. She, she always, you know, is. And of course, Julie will take that role, you know, in the future as well. But, but to see these people work behind the scenes, even though they're professionals in their own right way and other things that they do with their families is phenomenal. And to not get, really get paid for it is even more so. That's impressive. But the selection of the superintendent was, was, was a really, it was, it was a great thing to go through and an honor to go through of where we came from and to have you here as our superintendent, Mr. Turner. In addition to that, obviously, you know, you all chuckle sometimes about this, but, you know, with, most of you know that I'm a sports guy. It took me through life. It took me through school. It gave me an opportunity to play at a collegiate level, to meet a lot of professional athletes as well. And, you know, I think it, you know, a lot of the A.D.s and coaches and even band directors out there know with, with what was, was set up last year, having the blessing of some additional monies come our way. And then with how Dr. Poe had set that up previously with, with our financial committee, which is our budget committee, and then having the opportunity for the board to vote on that, that was a great accomplishment, and I'm excited to see what that's going to do. I've heard from, from multiple A.D.s and coaches already and a band director about the excitement that they've got, even though we're going through COVID right now, that we're going to see that come to fruition here probably by spring. So I'm ecstatic about that. One of the things that, that I really wish that because of COVID, we didn't hit upon, but this does go back to the finances here in Boone County. I know that between what Ms. Shield has been doing, has been diligent and being very conservative of how our numbers come about, what I think the taxpayers really need to think about, and, you know, this is dear to my heart. And, and we really need to put our state representatives and our state senators in this position. And I know some of you may be looking at your phones, but this is one important thing that you listen to, is that we lose a lot of money here in Boone County on an annual basis and have been for a long time. Whether that would be tax money, whatever type of money that would be, and that goes to Frankfurt. We get a percent of that back, but not all of it. And this is the most important time that we need to have our state representatives and our state senators work with our district and just as well as, you know, the community to try to be sure that we can at least secure those funds back here in Boone County and keep them here. Yeah, we have Amazon coming, you know, and it's going to bring some great things, but keep in mind, when they come, we're still going to lose a lot of that tax money. That windfall of money last year that we got of $16 million, we gave about three, three and a half of that to the state. We didn't see that. That should have stayed right here in Boone County for our teachers, for our students, and for our schools, and we had to give that up. So I do encourage you to think about that. Write letters to your senators, write letters to your representatives, and work close with the board on that. I know that that's, that's important, that we try to keep our money here in Boone County. If we really want to focus on our kids, that's one thing you need to consider too. But I'll disclose and say that this has been a great opportunity. I'm going to support you all. You know that if you need me down in Frankfurt, I'll go down there if I'm not on a plane somewhere. But, but that being said, you know, you can always call upon me. A lot of you, if not all of you, that I've at least had the opportunity to work with are dear to my heart, and we've got a lot of stories and history together. So I may not always speak eloquently, but I'm going to be pretty dang blunt. So for what it's worth, take, take that, take that for what it's worth because, you know, I'm a Boone County kid through and through and will have a product of this, and just been very thankful to have this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Troy. And tonight he spoke a lot. It wasn't until 2:30. No, thank you for that. One thing I'll add on to what Troy said, and Mr. Turner, maybe Ms. Shield, an idea that I think the judge executive had a while back was that, you know, the windfall that happened, that, you know, when, I don't think anybody's doing something they shouldn't be doing. It just was an oversight at either that corporate level or maybe the county level, whatever, but, you know, he feels like there might be other situations out there that would warrant some investment from the district, investment from the county to maybe track, track that down. So it's just something to file away that it could be worth, worth investing in. So like Mr. Fryman, tonight will be my last night at a board meeting as a, as a board member. You know, and it has been a great four years. I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot about myself. I've learned a lot from each of my colleagues. Certainly, Mr. Massey and Bonnie Rickert, ahead of them, or earlier on the board with me. You know, people ask a lot, you enjoy being on the board, and up until this year, I've always said yes. This year, seven, about percent of the time. But no, seriously, I have enjoyed it. And what I tell people is we get a bird's eye view into what it takes to do school in the state of Kentucky in a big district. And it's not easy. It's very complex. I'm continually amazed at the compassion, the dedication that this district has to students. And it's awesome to see. I know we're not perfect, but just the story after story after story. I feel very honored to have that visibility, and hopefully I can be, like Mr. Fryman said, hopefully I can be an asset going forward. You know, just kind of reflecting on some of the things I feel like we have accomplished as a board and really as a district. I mean, you all bring a bunch of ideas to us, and we have to figure out, okay, what's the best way to go forward? So, you know, we don't really drive things, right? We're oversight. I think Mr. Doosie said this earlier. You know, it's kind of a weird setup in Kentucky where we're the board, but there's some things we don't have any say. So it's complicated in that, in that regard. But some of the things I feel like we've, we've done well with, but still a lot of work is the Equity piece. I think Ms. Pyle spoke to that earlier, you know, the couple of things just in the last few years, the Newcomer Academy that opened up. It's a great resource for those families, and we have a lot of new families showing up in our country here in Boone County, and they need resources. And they're awesome kids. I go to, I do the exit interviews. I think a lot of us do here on the board, and I'm going to continue to do that because they let community members do it, and it's one of the best days of the year that I really enjoy. But the point I want to make is I've sat in exit interviews with kids that have been here for literally six, seven months. And they're graduating high school, which is kind of crazy. But just, they are so grateful for the way they're treated in our schools and the way they're supported in our schools. And that's important. These are, these are awesome kids that bring a ton of world, world context and experience that we don't. And I'd say the same thing for our underprivileged kids. I mean, you know, we learn way more from them many days than they learn from us. Couple of other examples, you know, Boone County High School is getting significant investment right now that's going on, so we're, we're excited that that's happening. The high school fields that Troy spoke to earlier, you know, some people would say it's athletics. It should be a pride, that, you know, should be at the top of the list. And, you know, it shouldn't be at the top of the list all the time. But these fields are much more than just for the football team, but the soccer team. You know, these fields will get used extensively during the school day. They'll get used by our community, hopefully, to a degree. And they become, they do become a source of pride for the community. So we're glad we're able to do that. The district facility plan was on the agenda tonight. We spoke to it briefly, and Mr. Ford referenced it. Again, if you look at our district facility plan, the top three investments in facilities are at Bigot County High School going forward. So I'm not talking about what's going on now. I'm talking about different stuff that needs to happen, significant investment that's going to happen. That's awesome. The Rise Academy is on that top three list as well, being a significant uplift. That's probably one of my big regrets is I didn't spend, I didn't spend enough time or any time at Rise. I talked to Dr. Vividoff and on and communicated with him on some issues, but you know that I really do regret not spending more time over there. I just, I respect so much what they're doing. And they're making investments outside of facilities too. They're doing a lot of really cool training this year, and they're doing some good stuff. So RA Jones is on the list as well. So just the Equity piece, yeah. Have we done everything we need to do? No, but we're moving in a really good direction. We have made progress in the personalized learning piece. There's been some hiccups and some starts and stops. And it fits, some people are seeing it now with virtual, right? It fits some people really, okay, really well. It's just some, not, not so well. So just the investments like Ignite, the investments in the way Valley Shannon's been laid out, the investments in the way Stiefel Chase has been laid out. But then just more on the curriculum side and what's going on there. Really great work, but I still have time to do. And then finally, I was going to make a joke, you know, the only thing I regret this year was the superintendent process, but that would have been rude. No, so it was, it was, it was a very, it was, it was, it was a long process, but it was very fulfilling, like Troy said. We don't get to meet very much as a group. We just, we don't. So, you know, those were a lot of soul searching closed sessions that were really good in my respect level, and frankly, my love for each of you all grew a ton through that process. And we wanted curriculum leadership, and we wanted leadership, we wanted curriculum strength, and we wanted leadership strength. And we have that in Mr. Turner. He's got a great team to support him, and I am excited for the future. We are stepping into a closed session here in a minute to do a mid-year review. And I hope I can say this. You're going to have to get me in trouble, Jerry, if I can't say this. But, you know, each of the, each of the board members does a review on his work to date, and one of the comments was, you know, I'm really excited to see your potential and your growth in this role. And I think that reflects us as a board, and we're excited for the future, but it won't be. So going forward, I already talked to him, as Troy took some of my time. So going forward, you know, in talking to Mr. Turner, he leaned in tonight. He asked Troy not to speak to, you know, what would you like to see, you know, some things carried on? The first is just don't change the heart of the district. Don't change the heart of the board. We do have a heart for kids. I know people can think we don't, but we do. We must be kids first. I think the vast majority of folks in the district are kids first and kids only all the time, especially for our most vulnerable. I mean, we've got, we've got families that are really, really, really struggling, and we just have to step up for them. You know, and I would just say, you know, if we're not kids first, or you're not kids first, you know, life's too short. Let's, you know, find, find something else. It's, it's just, it's just the way it needs to be. I'm going to tell a quick story. You know, we can have expulsion hearings, which is one of the crappy things about this job, about this role. So there, there has been times where we're in an expulsion hearing and all the facts tell us, yeah, a kid could be expelled. He or she could be expelled, maybe, maybe should be expelled. But the heart of the board is we look at that kid and we, we recognize there's a bunch of crap going around, on around in their life. And yeah, they, they screwed up and they, they probably shouldn't be in our schools based on policy if, if we wanted to make that move. And we have, on occasion, said, no, you know, and we'll ask the principal, can you, are you comfortable with this kid getting another chance? And can you work with this kid? And they say yes. And I just think, you know, that's something that will never change as a big county. The Equity piece, we talked to, we made some progress, Newcomer Academy, all that. So just, let's, please, please just double down on that. Let's keep that going. We've talked, I think, school, you know, there's a, in some ways, we're a system of schools and not a school system. So just as best we can going forward, you know, leverage our resources. One of the great things about a big district is we have a ton of resources. So leverage those as best we can. Try to do our best to, you know, another thing I think we saw in Mr. Turner was teamwork, collaboration. You know, and then let's just leverage our resources. I'll share another thing I read in one of the reviews, you know, just people feel heard, people feel valued, and that needs to happen throughout the district. And I think it is happening. So the final thing I'll speak into is, you know, just getting the kids back in school. You know, I'd like to challenge the board. I'd like to challenge the community. I'd like to challenge all stakeholders. I'd like to challenge BCEA. I'd like to challenge parents, community members. We have to look at both sides. You don't have to come to the, you don't have We, we have to look at both sides. You don't have to come to the agreement. You don't have to agree with me. But we are an education institution, an education organization, and it's not good enough to have your view from March 10th, when the governor did the first thing he did and never move off that view. Well, it's okay if you never move off the view, but too damn many people aren't even willing to open their eyes and look at the other side of the equation. I'm not saying you have to change your mind. But if you're not diligent enough, respectful enough, smart enough, frankly, to look at both sides and then, you know, you're veteran formed on your, on your view, then you're, you're really not, you're not doing anybody justice. You're not doing yourself a justice. You're not doing the kids of Boone County a justice. You're not doing our community a justice. I mean, I thought the ladies who spoke earlier, I mean, competitive. I mean, I've got a junior. Is he going to be as competitive as the kids that have been in front of their teachers? Probably not. I mean, at least he's only going to have a year or two of this, you know, my sixth grader, you know, if this goes on very long, you know, we're going to have a huge competitive problem for our kids in the state. So I, I would just close with, just please, let's keep a balanced view as a community. I, I'm going to say, you know, we got to start thinking ahead to the fall, frankly. You know, there's just, there's a lot of games being played with, with this situation. You know, I, I'm going to, I'm going to bore you all to death and keep you here all night, but I'm, I'm going to just give a couple of examples to make a point. When we were arguing and going back and forth with, with Frankfurt and different entities about getting back in school, you know, we were, we, one of our arguments was schools are doing. I've walked the buildings. We've walked the buildings. Schools are in, they're not having spread within the schools. If they aren't, very minimal. It's, you know, it's the safer place for the kids. If they're not in school, I know, I know kids in my neighborhood, they, they get together in a basement and they study all day. That's not safe. If people worry about COVID. I was in Panera a few, few months ago before we were back in school. Three high school kids walked in. They plopped down at a table about this big. I was there about 30 minutes. They were still there when I left and they did not have masks on. They were covered over time. That, that's not happening in our buildings. So, so my, my, my anecdote or my, my point I want to make is, so we were arguing that spread is minimal and in some places it's not happening. Well, we were told, well, you really, you really don't know. I mean, how can you say that? You don't know if anybody got COVID in your buildings. Okay? So just yesterday or the day before, Dr. Stack told a very elaborate story about spread in a building that eight or nine layers removed, somebody supposedly died. So if, if we can't tell in our buildings when we're in there every day and we're doing contact tracing and we're doing protocols, how can he tell? So it's just a game that's being played. I feel like there's a big game that's going to be played with the, the, the vaccinations. You know, if you really pay attention to what Governor Beshear is saying, he's trying to give lip service to, I'm going to, I'm going to prioritize educators. But if you listen to what he told the superintendents last Friday, the first wave is 38,000 doses and it's going to long-term care providers and patients with some healthcare. And it's not going to scratch the surface. Wave two, I can't remember the dose count. It's going to go to long-term care, more healthcare and potentially, I think, first responders. So, and, and we're still not scratching service in those communities. So then wave three, what I would call wave three, he's calling it wave one, one C. Maybe some educators. I mean, it'll be, it'll be a dozen. I mean, it won't be anything. So my point is if we wait around on the vaccination for the educators, we're just, we're, we're just going to be waiting around. I mean, it's just, I hope I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong. But I don't think I am. So I, I know in many respects, I'm speaking to the choir. You know, the, the last thing I'll say as far as looking forward to the fall and even, even the spring, actually I'll move back to January now as I ramble. If, if the governor doesn't make a mandate and makes the recommendation, I mean, we have to, we have to do what we think is best for Boone County. In August, I think if, if each of you shared, we, we, we would, we would say we made a mistake. But we made the only decision we could make at the time. And then three or four days later, when he kind of backpedaled, well, the ship had sailed so far on professional development and planning for the year that we were kind of in a cycle we couldn't get out of. If he doesn't do a mandate, I, I would just say, you know, do the best we can to get rolling as, as soon as we can. And I know, I know that's easy to say, hard to do. Easy to say, hard to do. Okay, that's all. Okay. Thank you very much. I, I, you know, I deeply respect all of you all. I love you guys. It's been, it's been a hard year, but it's been, I think, a good year. I hope a good year. And hopefully we've got a little bit that we can build on going into January. So thank you. Is there anything and information for proposals and communications? I will say Karen told me I was like her 73rd favorite board member that she started with. So I'm in the top 75. All right. She's been on the board so long. I think she started with a couple of hundreds. I'm in the top half. I always have to pick on Karen at some point because she loves me so much.
No, I would just like to say quickly, I have seven times. So I started with seven times, six times five and one times four. So you do know on that. And I will say of Mr. McIntyre and Mr. Fryman, that they are gentlemen of the highest quality. Hearts that know no bounds for kids. They have served honorably. They have served with integrity. And they've been straight shooters and they call it like it is. And sometimes that's hard, even for us as board members to hear ourselves. It's, it's been an honor. I, I feel so blessed for my years here in Boone County with the quality of people that I've served with and you two rank in there. Well, Troy will hire than that, but you know, and it, it is truly an honor. And for my friend, Mr. Doosin, I never thought that I would come to the board meeting and you would be here at some point, but you earned your retirement. For those who don't know Jerry, there were times when he would walk into a planning zoning meeting or into a courtroom and the other side would just throw up their hands and say, we're done. Jerry Doosin's the opposing counsel. So he, he is, and I said this to him and about him for all of these years, one of the most exemplary school attorneys, not only in, in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, but in my mind, in, in the world. And he is kind. He's kind and as the district goes, he has a heart for kids too. And now he'll turn that up to his grandkids. So you, you earned your retirement, but I'm willing to issue you a report of honor.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Fryman and Mr. McIntyre. I know, I can speak for experience. Most people have no idea how many hours you prep for meetings, how many times you miss dinner, how many times you miss a game or a birthday or anniversary. I've seen you at graduations. I've seen you at committee meetings. I've seen you at our leadership conferences. No one will ever know the hard time you put into your job, but we do. And we say thank you. I know you'll be around because I know you love what you do in Boone County. And I know it's nothing concerning for you guys. I will thank Mr. Doosin. One of the things that's impressed me most about you is no matter how chaotic we are, I don't think any storm in this world would shake your patience or your wisdom. You always have the right words. And I've never seen you flustered in all of my eight years here. So I don't know if Karen has any witness that I don't, but you are one of the most steadfast, I was going to say yes. In my experience, you have been so steadfast and your wisdom will be great. Yes. But enjoy your time and enjoy your life.
I'm down here at the kiddie table with Troy with my, with my table mate. We like being down here. I am thoroughly going to miss Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Fryman. I have become very fond of both of you. Such big hearts for our kids and just the tireless advocates for our kids. And the amount of time and the thought process and thoughtfulness and hours upon hours and debating and just, I'm thoroughly going to miss you and it's been an honor, a complete honor to share with both of you.
All right. That brings us to item 12, closed executive session. I would recommend we go into closed session right now. Could I get a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion in a second. We will hear a closed session for discussion in roughly 10:48.